In the STEP program is, number one, we have a phenomenal cohort, very diverse. The teachers teach across all grade levels, K through 12, and the experience that they all bring to the room, even though we're new teachers, all new to ESE, we share our lifelong experiences both in and out of the classroom with each other, and that helps us to grow better and meaningful classes. I love the most about my job at Franklin is working with the kids. It can be trying, but that's ESE. And the reward at the end, particularly this time of the year, at the end of testing, to see their faces just light up after seeing how well that they've done, it makes the struggle all the more worth it. What would I tell someone that's interested in coming to ESE? Patience and passion. Make those your watchwords. Like I said before, there are going to be some trying days, and that's okay. The genuine care that you have for kids will come through. What I have found with these kids is they don't care what you know until they know that you care. And as long as you show that genuine concern and that love despite their disability, you will be rewarded in the end.
I'm Jessica Vaughn, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. You're watching Hillsborough Schools TV, and together, we're preparing students for life. I'm Jessica Vaughn, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. I want to welcome you to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We serve more than 200,000 students, including children starting with our early learning programs and continuing with adults through our workforce programs.
I'm Karen Perez, the School Board's Vice Chair. Our district is the seventh largest in America, and our team is made up of 24,000 people, working at close to 250 sites across the county. Nuestro distrito es el séptimo más grande de los Estados Unidos y el tercero más grande del Estado de Florida. Nuestro equipo está formado por 24 millones de personas que trabajan en cerca de 250 escuelas en todo el condado.
Our district is diverse and dedicated. Our board meetings are held in our board auditorium on select Tuesdays at 4:00 PM. The best way to serve our students and our community is to involve you, the public, in what we do.
You are welcome to meet or email any of our board members and follow our district on social media. School board meetings are covered live by Hillsborough Schools TV on Spectrum 635 and Frontier Channel 32.
Meetings are also streamed live on our website at hillsbrowsschools.org. Closed captioning is provided on all broadcasts, and past meetings are available in our online archive.
We are interested in what the public has to say. We'll include time for audience comments before we address our business items. Our agenda and any supporting materials can be viewed online in advance. They are posted seven days before each meeting on our website at hillsbrowsschools.org.
Our vision is preparing students for life, and that means all students every day. Todos los estudiantes todos los días. Thank you for your interest in education. With your help, we are making decisions that shape our community's future.
The board meeting of September 9th, 2025 is now called to order. Member Perez will lead us in a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On this Thursday, September 11th, we will pause to remember and honor the lives lost and the historic actions taken, the profound impact that the events of 2001 had on our nation. As we reflect on this Thursday, let us also remember the strength, resilience, and unity that emerged in the face of tragedy. Let us honor the memory of those lost by coming together in compassion, unity, and understanding. May we never forget the sacrifices made and the lessons learned as we strive to build a brighter future for all. Would we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, wait. Please, thank you, and at this time, please stand as Lazaro Alaman, Daylin Morales, Josania Quintana, and Ashley Torres Alvarez from Canela Elementary School Dual Language Program, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in both English and Spanish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Prometo lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la república que representa una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Thank you.
You guys did a fantastic job. Member Perez, will you now please acknowledge our student entertainment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank the Gaither High School Fuego Latino Club, along with Principal Dr. Jeremy Klein and Director Edna Martinez. These wonderful students entertain us prior to the start of our board meeting. At this time, we would like to invite the students up to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Raymond Hernandez, and I am in 11th grade.
Hello, my name is Harry Altamore, and I'm in 11th grade.
Hello, my name is Lourdes DeFerrari, and I'm in 10th grade.
Hello, my name is Camixandra Alvarez, and I'm in 12th grade.
Hello, my name is Nicole Mulian, and I am in 11th grade.
Hello, my name is Victoria Binder, and my grade is 9.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Gonzalez, and my grade is 10.
Hello, my name is Eliane Parral, and I'm in 10th grade.
Hello, my name is Ismerani, I am 10th grade.
Hey, my name is Sienna, and I'm in 10th grade.
Hi, my name is Edna Martinez, Spanish teacher from Gaither High. I'm very honored, we are very honored to be here. Thank you very much for the invitation.
Just on behalf of Gaither, thank you so much for the invite. You guys rocked it out. Wonderful job, guys.
Go Cowboys. If parents want to take some pictures. I hope everyone had a chance to catch you guys out there, because you were on fire. On fire. Great job. Thank you. All right, board members, I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Combs. Any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. We have one set of minutes to be approved today, August 26, 2025, school board meeting. I need an emotion and a second to approve the minutes. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Gray. Any discussion? If not, please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Board members, I'd like to go over the format of today's meeting. As a reminder, we are a nonpartisan board who believe all children can be empowered to learn and to succeed, and our decisions will be made with that understanding. To pave the way for efficient agenda statements and questions, board members will have five minutes to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. Afterwards, the superintendent can respond. If you have further questions, you're asked to get back in the queue. Member Perez will now read the board guidelines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we begin this afternoon's meeting, please allow me to quickly review the format of our school board meetings. Please silence all electronic devices. There are speakers in the room behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away from the dais. This meeting can be viewed with closed captioning on live webcasts, on cable TV, and on video monitors here in the auditorium. It can also be viewed with closed captioning in the online video archive.
Thank you. We have two items scheduled for time certain. 5:01 PM, we have our public hearing on the mileage rates and budget for the 25-26 fiscal year, and at 6:00 PM, we have employee and student input. But now, we're going to transition to our recognitions, and we have A101, Recognition of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers Best Crew Award. And Amory Courtney will come up and introduce and let us know about our award.
Great. Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent, Cabinet members, and guests. The BUCKS Best Crew Program, supported by our amazing partner, the Tampa Bay Buccaneers, who are celebrating their 50th season of professional football in the Tampa Bay area. This month's award recognizes outstanding standout Hillsborough County Public School teachers, administrators, and support staff for outstanding service, overall impact on students, and accomplishments beyond the classroom. We are honored to have Brian Ford, Chief Operating Officer of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers, here tonight to announce this month's award recipients.
Well, good afternoon, board, Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent, and thank you for that warm welcome. Good afternoon, everyone. I know it's a busy night, so thank you for allowing us to come. Very humbled to be here to kick off the school year. And as was mentioned, this program is great. We have a tradition at One Buck where we recognize anyone that goes over and above. So on behalf of the Glazer family and our entire organization, I'm here to recognize some of some folks in Hillsborough County Public Schools that have gone over and above. First off, Ms. Carla Nolan, the principal at Miles Elementary. So Ms. Nolan, these comments are coming from your staff, your parents, and your peers. So this is very humbling when I heard your story and what you've accomplished at Miles Elementary. Transforming leadership has profoundly elevated Miles Elementary. When you first arrived, the school was graded a D by the state of Florida. Under your guidance, you've rose that to a high C this past school year, just 15 points shy of a B. This remarkable progress reflects your unwavering commitment to academic excellence, student well-being, and thriving school culture. Your innovative initiatives, such as the highly successful fifth-grade house program and the Empowering Gems program for girls, has enriched the student experience and built strong community connections. Congratulations. Your leadership style is both thoughtful and inspiring. You regularly, and I'm a big fan of this, write notes to encourage your staff, reinforcing the culture of appreciation and motivation. That's tremendous. Such a busy schedule, taking the time to do that. As a result, teacher retention at Miles is impressively high because educators want to be a part of your team. Congratulations. You're not only a leader, but you're a catalyst for lasting change. Congratulations and thank you. Thanks for all that you do each and every day. And I like her outfit. Ms. Turinsky is far more than an athletic leader. She's a true role model who inspires. And again, these comments are coming from your peers, your students, and the faculty. You're a true role model who inspired inspires discipline, teamwork, and resilience in every student that you coach. Your dedication to physical education and character development is second to none. That's a big statement. Jennifer cultivates a culture of respect and perseverance, consistently encouraging your students to push beyond their limits and to believe in their potential. We need more coaches like this. As a wellness advocate for the staff at the school, Jennifer designs engaging challenges that promote healthy eating and active lifestyles, making wellness both fun and accessible. That's the key. You have a unique gift for making people feel seen, heard, and valued, as any great leader, and in turn, you inspire others to join your mission. Your energy, compassion, and leadership make you an irreplaceable asset to your school. That's a big statement there. Talk about going over and above. Come on down here. Tracy Jones, come on down here. Town and Country, and I love your shirt as well. This guy has to be my favorite part of my week, I got to tell her. All right, we won't mess up the ball on this one. Instructural Support, Tracy Jones from Town and Country Elementary School. Again, these comments are coming from your peers, your teachers, your principal, the students themselves and their families. As an ESE paraprofessional, you lead by example, inspiring through your actions every single day. Your consistent encouragement and thoughtful guidance empower students to believe in themselves and to strive for greatness, with a perfect balance of energy, structure, and compassion. Compassion, I can see that. You leave a lasting impression on everyone you encounter. That's tremendous. You are someone who naturally gravitate towards, you have everybody coming towards you and getting behind you. Your presence radiates kindness, and your unwavering consistently builds trust and comfort. Your dedication makes you not only a remarkable educator, but also a cherished role model within your school community. That's unbelievable. Congratulations and thank you.
Congratulations and thank you so much. All right, we have one more recognition. A02, Recognition of Natural Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15, 2025 through October 15, 2025. Member Perez will highlight this recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I start, I want to recognize the student guest. I want to welcome Gabriel Lopez in the audience with us. Hillsborough County Public Schools publicly recognizes Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15 to October 15. This year's theme is a collective heritage honoring the past, inspiring the future. This is a time to celebrate and honor the many contributions Hispanic Americans make to society. Our school district is home to more than 80,000 Hispanic students, which is close to 40% of our district's population. Each year, our students, staff, and schools, staff, and students do a wonderful job of holding events to showcase Hispanic heritage. Hillsborough County Public Schools supports its Hispanic families by providing Spanish-language family engagement that guides students and Spanish-speaking families through the educational process. Hillsborough County Public Schools also supports Hispanic families with resources such as school-based welcome centers and bilingual information sessions. Hillsborough Public County Schools is committed to celebrating culture and supporting Hispanic students academically and culturally, both during the month and beyond.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to public comment. The board welcomes public comments from citizens and values your input to the board. In order to provide the most comprehensive responses to your comments, our staff will follow up with you and keep our board informed about the responses. Our school board respects the public's right to speak to the board, and we appreciate you taking your time to be here. You have the right to speak about any issue you'd like, and you'll not be interrupted. However, any behavior intended to interrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be allowed, and we request that you try and focus on the issues. Due to the number of speakers who have signed up today and to ensure all voices are able to be heard, and as aligned with our school board way of work, this afternoon, each speaker will be given two minutes. We understand that there are a lot of people here tonight, and many of you feel very passionately about some of the issues on the agenda. Everyone who signed up for public comment has the right to speak and to be heard. We're going to respectfully ask that you do not interrupt the speakers by clapping or otherwise interrupting, and that way, everybody gets a chance to be heard. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. You have two minutes, and they start when you begin speaking. When there are 30 seconds left, you'll see a yellow light on the lectern, and you'll hear a chime. A red light and chime will indicate when your time is up. I will now call up the first five speakers.
Hello, board, Superintendent. First, I want to thank Superintendent Ayers for putting this on the agenda today. The Florida Education Department and the State School Board said that these two books, Identical and Blankets, had to be removed from all Hillsborough Public School libraries. The irony is that the only reason this had to be on the agenda today is because the five Democrats on this board voted to keep these books last year when the books were challenged by parents. These five are now being asked to reverse their votes in order to countermand the bad decision they made last year. I also want to thank Julie Gebharts, whose unflagging efforts brought this entire matter to the attention of the community, the state board, and the Florida Legislature. She led the effort that put the 57 books on the state's removal list. We'll be reviewing about 600 more books and taking these reviews to the state in Tallahassee. We would far prefer to work with you to identify and remove all material that's harmful to minors.
to identify and remove all material that's harmful to minors. If not, you can expect another spanking from the state.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Cynthia Weiss. I'm a resident of Tampa, and as you might guess, my children have been out of school a long time. One of my children has been an educator for over 15 years. I've never heard her talk of a positive correlation between book banning and student success. In 1637, before the US was, well, even the US, a book by Thomas Morton was banned because the Puritans believed him of dancing and frisking together with Native Americans. In 1933, book banning was part of the larger suppression of dissenting ideas and promotion of Nazi ideology. Book banning in the US remained popular through the 1950s era of McCarthyism and anti-Hollywood, when the fear of communism was linked to many titles. Did any of these book bans achieve anything positive for any civilized society? I can't think of one. I doubt you can either. So what's the point? Books chosen by library scientists that have been vetted, who have vetted the books for authenticity and truth should be the criteria for inclusion, not a parent or group of parents' descent. Has the banning of books about Ruby Bridges and the embarrassing visual of angry white parents screaming at a five-year-old made students better citizens? We should have plenty of data at this point about the impact of banned books. Have test scores improved? Have the bans made our kids smarter, kinder, faster, or any other synonym to better? When you agree to ban a book, I implore you to ask yourself if the ban will result in smarter, kinder, or faster kids. If the answer is no, and you signed it anyway, take a deep breath, look in the mirror, and think about the Puritans of 1637, Nazis in 1933, McCarthyists of 1950. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Carmen, and I'm a Hillsborough County resident and taxpayer. Let me be clear, we are here before you today pleading with you not to ban Blankets and Identical against both district and state law because of one person. And I mean this disparagingly. Her name is Julie Gebhardtz, and she thinks she knows more than certified Hillsborough County media specialists, teachers, Hillsborough County parents, and you, our school board. But Julie doesn't work alone. The extreme and dangerous overreach by the state of Florida Department of Education and Attorney General, who love to talk about law and order, and out of the other side of their mouths break the law and push their political agenda through tweet. We're here because Attorney General James Outhmeyer, whatever, Education Commissioner Anastasios Kamoutas, and appointed and not elected board members, who include Leila Collins, who was heartily defeated for Hillsborough County School Board seat. And yet, she has managed through political maneuvering to get herself appointed to a DOE position where she can inflict her deeply unpopular and political beliefs onto this county. And unpopular they are. Banning books is incredibly unpopular. In fact, a Washington Post article in 2023 claimed that 11 people were responsible for over 50% of book bans in the US. And this trend can be seen here in Hillsborough County, where one person is responsible for 100% of our book bans. As we have seen recently with the removal of 55 titles, as Hillsborough County School Board goes, so do other school districts in the state of Florida. What happens here today affects not just 242,000 Hillsborough County students, but millions across the state. How you vote and who you choose to protect will have a butterfly effect. This harkens Baldwin's quote, "The children are always ours, every single one of them." That includes trans kids, queer kids, immigrant kids, BIPOC kids, all of whom are students in your district. You are all of their stewards. None of their well-being and safety should be sacrificed for the sake of these unnecessary and expensive cultural wars the DOE and the Attorney General are waging. And that is exactly what this is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Kate Ferris Thompson. I've been a Hillsborough County resident and taxpayer most of my life. I've raised both my children to adulthood here, both graduated Hillsborough High School, as I did. My children are not afraid of the world. I believe it is a parent's job to raise your child with the tools to be kind, survive, and eventually to thrive in your absence. We were thankfully able to provide love, shelter, and environment to explore a variety of interests all around. This, I hope, helps them bring logic and thoughtful review into any discourse they might have with someone of a different opinion than their own. We always encourage them to be critical thinkers. I believe strongly in our First Amendment rights. I took them to the library every Monday till they could walk or ride on their own. I never worried that they were being groomed to accept someone else's ideology because I encouraged them to look beyond themselves, to think outside of themselves and for themselves. We had great discussions about all sorts of topics in the books they chose over the years. We discussed many stories and a variety of religions when they were interested, and also who wrote them and in what timeline, what part of the world, what was happening in the world at the time it was written, context. Erase a person's perspective or culture, and it doesn't stop that perspective from existing. And there are billions of minds and voices on this planet, not like our own. Allowing books to be banned and removed from shelves after already being vetted by competent educators and parental review only serves to undermine the whole point of free speech in our country. I'm not rich, so I pay my taxes, and I don't like paying for good books being snatched out of the hands of the many already underrepresented kids in our public schools. My children are thankfully grown and making their own life choices, but I wonder if you would serve the current students better by spending less time and money banning books and more on a discussion about how Florida public schools. Thank you.
Can I call up speakers six through 10, please? Six through 10. And next speaker.
All right. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Matthew Johnson. I am the father of two students and the husband of a teacher in Hillsborough Public Schools. I am here today to ask that you vote no on the requested appeal regarding the challenged materials Blankets and Identical. The board has already followed the challenge process and stood by the media specialist in determining that these materials are appropriate for high school students. These books have not changed since this decision, nor has the makeup of this board. What's changed is our governor has realized that his legislature no longer has a taste for cultural wars and censorship, so he needs to find other ways to push his values on communities that don't want them. Hillsborough County wants and deserves a school system that prepares our students to function within our diverse and challenging world. I can say this with confidence because, as a resident of District 3, I received ads from a candidate that ran the platform of being Ronald's puppet. That candidate lost by 18 points last year because the people of Tampa do not want the schools of Ron DeSantis. I have found allies in parents and teachers in my school who are eager to support all our students, but there is a growing fear that the district is no longer able to protect them. The current climate of threats from the state has created a chilling effect in our community to the point where teachers fear that they too will face consequences if they put their students' well-being over the governor's values. As example, I have a saint of a teacher willing to start a GSA in our school, but she can't afford to be fired for doing so. So today, you have a chance to reaffirm your commitment to our community. Vote no on this appeal, and let the residents of Hillsborough County and all of its educators rest assured that you will not let their voices be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Cindy Richards, and I'm a Hillsborough County parent for 15 years. Our oldest is a Bloomingdale High School graduate, and our youngest is a freshman this year. My husband and I are both proud Florida natives and Navy veterans for 10 years each. I'm here today to talk about the banning of books. The recent approach I've seen of isolating uncomfortable snippets without full review, while sensational and attention-grabbing, is simply wrong. Literally, judging a book by its cover or a few sentences inside is dangerous, and I'm here to urge you to honor this board's processes already in place. A young, as a young innocent girl, I was manipulated and preyed upon by people we teach our children to trust. My abusers took advantage of my innocence and ignorance and normalized the abuse, grooming me for future abusers. I did not realize I was abused, it was abuse, until I was well into my adulthood. The damage has been deep and lifelong. Books were a catalyst to my healing. They helped me break the cycle of abuse and arm my children with knowledge and understanding. I share this today, not for sympathy, but because I want you to understand that access to books, even the ones with difficult and scary messages, are vital to keeping our youth safe and healthy. Keeping children innocent and hiding hard truths also keeps them ignorant and more vulnerable to the pitfalls we all want to avoid. I'm asking you to honor your established book review processes. Consider each book in its entirety. Ask yourselves what message the book sends and whether it could change a child's life. Books are a safe space for understanding and enlightenment. They provide access to unattainable corners of the world and connect us all in our humanity. Exposing children to diversity in the world is not indoctrination. Limiting their worldview is. I'd like to take a moment of silence to honor the children who are falling through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Chris Beard, and I am a resident of Hillsborough County. I need to make a correction right off the bat. This is not about book banning. This is about appropriate reading for children. These books can be bought and sold anywhere else, but they don't need to be in the public, in the, in the school libraries. Because introducing graphic content too early can cause emotional confusion, anxiety, and even trauma in some students. Children are not emotionally equipped to process explicit sexual scenarios, which is, this is what it is, especially when presented without context or guidance. And as we all know, mental health is already a crisis among teens, so why are we adding fuel to that fire? So I listened to the video of the school board meeting, the state board meeting, and one of the board members suggested firing all of the media specialists. However, I don't think that is the problem. I think the problem is the process, because all of the media specialists can't be that wrong. It's the process. So I'm going to read some of this context, content. Running with Scissors is a book by Augustus Burrows. Page 110, and there are four copies in these public, in these, in the libraries. "I'm lying on my back on Neil's bed, the top of my head knocking against the headboard because his cock is inexplicably down, inexplicably down my throat. All I see is a triangle of dark hair coming at me. This, and I feel an unprecedented sensation of fullness in my throat. It's hard to breathe. The air comes into my nose in gasps that seems controlled by the thrusting of Neil's hips. He thrusts, I get air. The air comes out of my mouth, forced around the shaft of his cock. Yes, F-ing yes, he spits, Jesus, Mother F-"
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Honorable Board. Good afternoon. I'd like to make some corrections really quick before I start into the speech. The, one of the speakers mentioned that Ruby Ridge and a lot of the racists who were spitting and saying a bunch of stuff, let's put into the record that those races were Democrats. And, and it is the party of slavery, is the party of moral rot, and is the party of destruction of our nation. I do not come before you tonight with mere opinion, I come with fact. Words printed in books currently resting on the shelves of our children's libraries, words so graphic, so vile, so degrading, that if I were to read them aloud in this chamber, every head in this room would bow in shame. That is the point, that these passages cannot be spoken in public, then they have no place in the hands of a 13-year-old child or children. Let's be honest. Schools exist to teach reading, math, history, and science. They do not exist to drag children into the gutter of incest, rape, suicidal fantasies, and pornographic detail. Yet that is what is written in the book Identical by Helen Hopkins does. Even the state, even the State Board of Education called it pornographic. Still, this board voted to keep it 5 to 2. That is not courage, that is moral collapse. Or Take Blankets by Craig Thomas, pages, pages of nude teenagers and sexual acts, pages that mock faith itself, like, I will not repeat that line. Ask yourselves this. What prepares children for adulthood? It is this what strings community, or is this the slow poison that corrodes the very soul of our youth? I will ask each of you directly. Would you right now read these passages out loud before the parents, teachers, and children? If your answer is no, then your conscience already knows the truth.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Rachel Doyle. I'm a parent of two in your schools. First of all, who is "we"? Because when a bunch of old people who I have never seen in my life before get up here and say, "Our kids, we," that has nothing to do with me. I've never seen them before. I don't know who these people are. They don't show up here when I talk about how summer programming sucks. They don't talk about the ESE problems. In fact, the same people I've seen here are in fact the same people who ask you to get rid of more ESE teachers, are they not? I remember that. Do any of you? Jesus. You all know this meeting is a sham. You two are going to vote not to keep the books, and the rest of you are going to vote no, even though you voted yes last time. Why? Coercion. You know it's coercion. You know that you, if you vote yes, you're going to face charges from the Florida Attorney General. That's not, is that really the best you can do? Is that the best you can do for my kids? Oh my God, this meeting is a sham. Ban the books or else. Is this my parental rights and education at work? Is this it? I feel so supported and heard. Thank you so much. Any decision based on fear of reprisal is not a good decision. It's not the decision my kids deserve. And in fact, it's, it's literally called coercion. I know that's a big word for Elmo. All of this is a slap in the face to the parents who voted you in. Your favorite non-public schools parent and her friends, Julie Gebhardtz, hey weirdo, has successfully gotten people who were appointed, not elected, in Tallahassee to put you in a position where you don't feel like you get to make a choice. Therefore, I don't get to make a choice. There is no parental rights in education anymore here in Hillsborough. Nothing screams parental rights in education like coercion. Somehow, a woman who has zero kids in public school has more rights in this county to dictate my kid's educational environment than I do. Spitting in my face would be less disrespectful than lying and saying this somehow protects my parental rights. Abolishing the process, demonizing my kids' media specialists. Fire the media specialist? You're going to listen to some old lady who doesn't have kids in public school asking you to fire your media specialist over me? Who are these people?
Thank you. Can we have the next speakers, 11 through 15, please? And if I can remind, I know everyone's passionate, but if we can hold our clapping. Thank you.
Hello, Board Superintendent, Madam Chair. Julie McGill, Hillsborough County. My kids went to public school, okay? And I can't believe there's parents here that think that this material is okay for their own kids. It's, it's sad. As many times as people have stood up here and read that graphic content to you, and it still gets passed, it's beyond me. Don't confuse this, these books with DEI. This is not DEI. This is a failure to protect our kids. 13-year-old kids should not have this kind of material available to them. It's, it's not about censorship either. We don't put gambling codes and odds in our mathematics classes to teach math. We don't tell people how to build meth labs in chemistry to teach chemistry. So why do we have pornographic books in our libraries to teach our kids? Okay? Let's also talk about the authors. Maybe it's not banning the books. Maybe it's banning the authors that are putting out this garbage. It's crazy. It's disgusting content. We shouldn't let them profit off of our children. You can't sit here and approve these things as education. It's not education. Education is math, reading, and science. We don't need pornographic material in our libraries. I am urging you to please vote against these two last books. Please, find it in your hearts. Find it for our kids, vote no. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Aunt Avila. Real quick corrections, statistics is used in gambling, so it's an important mathematics principle. So, good afternoon Superintendent and members- So, good afternoon Superintendent and members of the school board. My name is Aunt Avila, and I am the Tampa Bay Community Organizer for Equality Florida. In that role, I work closely with many community leaders and have had the honor to stand here with families and parents from this county to advocate for their students here at Hillsborough County Schools. I came here today to express my frustration at the state's pressure campaign against this district and the assault on the rights of parents and families to make decisions for their students, alienating local leaders they've elected to carry out their mandate to serve all students and families with dignity and respect, to collaborate with, with the shared goal of educating our young people. I'm here and joined once again by many Hillsborough parents and families to urge you to stand by the decisions that you've made in the past. Stand by the rigorous review process that the books being considered for removal have already been through, and stand with the vast majority of Hillsborough parents and families and students that need you to take a stand with them against this petty corrupt state administration. Please stand with us and stand on the right side of this to protect the district from this heinous government overreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Drew Vaughn. I am the parent of four students here in Hillsborough County Public Schools. Just two weekends ago, we had some friends over, a gay couple who, it was their son's birthday. And being smart, one of the dads and I left to go get pizza so we wouldn't have to deal with all seven of the kids. While we were going to pick up that pizza, Josh, who is one of the dads, told me a story. And what he told me is, he grew up on a farm in Wisconsin, on a dairy farm, of course, it's freaking Wisconsin. And he never saw himself represented in a book until he was twenty-one. He never saw a gay character in a story until he was twenty-one. We're here today because we don't want that to happen again. There has already been a process to review these books, and I understand the difficult position that many of you are in, that the state is putting pressure on you to do things that maybe you don't agree with. And what I'm asking you to do is to follow the rules and the laws, which you have already done in reviewing these books and keeping them on the shelves. Because no kid in Hillsborough County or anywhere else deserves to feel unrepresented until they're twenty-one years old. Please stand by your past ruling. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Barbara Routen. I've been in the county since nineteen seventy-seven. I'd like to thank all of you for your service to the students of our community. There's a story in our family about an uncle who was a physician in rural southern Indiana. One day, he made a house call, only to find that the woman who had made the appointment wasn't sick, she just wanted to ask him something in the privacy of her home. The question was, how do homosexuals do it? Nowadays, anyone of any age can find out everything about anything online at any time, and our kids know it. And we know what kinds of results can, can come up when they ask certain questions. I'm the grandmother of a young girl in a Hillsborough County school, and I want kids, my granddaughter and all kids, to have access to age-appropriate books vetted and chosen by local teachers, parents, and media specialists. The students in our county come from varied backgrounds and face myriad challenges and situations in their lives, and they need books and other media that reflect that range. Books are a way for them to read about others like themselves or very different from themselves. Books can provide them new insights or possible solutions and instill empathy in them. I urge you to keep with your decision that you made about these books that have already been vetted and allow them to stay in our high school libraries. Thank you for your thoughtful deliberations and decisions, and thanks again for your selfless service to our students.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Carmen, the conservative Carmen here today. And I just want to debunk some of the misinformation that's being already spouted here today. I had a whole other speech, but hearing some of these people speak, it's completely misinformation. I don't know where they're getting their information from. No one is asking you to ban books. We're asking you to follow Florida state statute that specifically talks about pornography in, in books that is given to minors. This was, the bill was passed in Tallahassee in the House, but it didn't make it to the Senate, and they did a lot of review and were given lots of information about that. And these books need to be removed because they are pornographic in content. And one lady said that we are just basically taking little snippets out of the books and they're out of context. That is not true. To do you all's book repro, book process, we have to read the whole entire book, and it is a very arduous process. The process you all have here at Hillsborough County is a long, hard process to get any book removed. So we are not taking just little snippets, we are reading the whole books. And we aren't asking books that are giving advice to gay children to be removed. We get it, everyone needs to be represented. If there's books out there that help children navigate the pitfalls of being gay, queer, whatever it may be, those aren't the books we're asking you guys to remove. We're asking books to be removed that contain graphic pornographic content and pornographic pictures, not about kids trying to find themselves in this world. The old lady in the audience, who happens to be a good friend of mine, never called for any of the media specialists to be fired, just to clear that up today. And parental rights are not being trampled. Any parent can go buy these books that they want to. You can find them on Amazon, you can go to a bookstore. If you want to expose your children to this smut, knock yourself out, but do it on your own personal time and not in our public schools, where I'm not there to protect my child from this crap on the bookshelves. Buy it for your own kids. These books are not appropriate for minors. American Psycho is one I've read here multiple times. That is disgusting. The guy dismembers prostitutes that he drugged and raped and made them do terrible awful things with awful de-
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Can I also, I would like to call up, I would like to call up the next five speakers, fifteen, fifteen through twenty, but I also want you to know that we have a public hearing at time certain at five, so if we can't get to all the speakers, you'll have to sit down and then just kind of remember your order when we go back to public comment. Thank you for your patience, you may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Julie Gebhard's. When your leadership is unwilling to read these books in a public forum of adults at the state BOE meeting, no one can argue that these books belong in front of children. And you have told me that I have done damage by reading these books here out loud, and I just want to remind you, these are not my books, these are your books that you have defended and stood behind. So I would like to consider Identical in its entirety, because I did read the whole thing, I've read both Blankets and Identical. And let me just tell you a little bit about Identical. It conveys utter hopelessness, despair. There is no redemption in the story. It should be rated NC seventeen at least, oh, yeah, NC seventeen X, whatever you want to call it, just by the mere rating, I mean, for the fact that it has thirty-six F-bombs. And I'll just say, school and district committees touted it and defended it as a story of survival, and yet, the victim of the incestuous rape, repeated incestuous rape by her father, was counseled to forgive him. He did not face any justice for his behavior. So if you want to talk about a diverse book, let's at least put a book in here that has some redemptive story, a way to see light and hope. And let me also tell you this, she, the third from the last page of the book was still cutting herself and talking about how good it felt. She daydreamed about bleeding out and how it would be a jump into ultimate freedom. She's talking about killing herself, and this is what the book talks about. So how about we focus on inspiring children, stand up and protect those who are entrusted to your care? No one is focused on gay books, again, like Carmen just said. There's nothing gay in either of the two books that you're voting on today, except for the pedophile who's molesting a little boy, and that's illustrated also in Blankets. I've been coming here four years now pleading with you to protect children, and you've said no hundreds of times. You shouldn't fear your constituency, you shouldn't fear our state leadership, you should actually fear your Creator and the Creator of these precious children.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Angel Ramos, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the parents and community members who are deeply concerned about the presence of sexually explicit books in our school libraries. Let me be clear, this is not about censorship, and it is not about silencing ideas. It is about protecting children and ensuring that schools remain a place of learning, not exposure to graphic adult content. Books like Identical by Helen Hop, Ellen Hopkins and Blankets by Craig Thompson contain material that is so explicit, so graphic, that most adults in this room would be uncomfortable hearing it read out loud. Yet these same books are being made available to middle and high school students with no parental notifications, and that is unacceptable. If a movie with thirty-six uses of the F-word and graphic sexual assault would be rated R or X, why is the written equivalent sitting on a school library shelf for children as young as thirteen? Movies and video games require parental consent because we recognize the impact explicit content can have on young minds. Why are our schools exempt from the same common sense? Parents have the God-given and constitutional right to direct the moral upbringing of their children, while schools exist to support basic education, math, science, history, reading, not to undermine parental authority or expose children to pornographic material. Introducing explicit sexual scenarios to children does not prepare them for life. It confuses them, it desensitizes them, and in some cases causes emotional harm. Our taxpayer dollars should not be funding books that would not even be allowed in prisons. If it is too offensive to read these passages out loud in this meeting, then it is far too offensive to place these in front of our kids. It is time to restore common sense and let children be children. Let schools be a place of learning and growth, not confusion and sexualization. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Alyssa. I'm the chapter chair for our Local Moms for Liberty chapter, a mom of two, and obviously the speakers ahead of me, we know that we're here once again arguing about the pornographic books that sexualize our children. Fun fact, for all the believing of the book banning lies, you can still check these books out in your local public libraries. Bookstores are online, so not banned. These books are just, we don't want them in front of our kids without our parental consent. We believe, like the gentleman said before me, we believe these books are safe for our students to read, but too sexual for our incarcerated criminals. Sounds a little crazy. We don't offer Playboy magazines in classrooms, porn sites on our computers in school, we don't allow inappropriate lyrics in our pre-game music at our sporting events, why do we allow it on our bookshelves? I'm not even going to waste my time up here talking the rest of the time about books. What I am going to come up here and talk about is the many parents and even teachers throughout the school years who have come to us at Moms for Liberty for, to help, because they don't know what to do when their child is put in an unsafe scenario at their local public school. Between inappropriate content being taught in their classrooms, or radical propaganda put up in the hallways, or even expired milk and moldy cheese that serve to the children at lunch, we guide them on who to contact, their school board members, their admin, superintendent. We teach, we educate them on how to show their concerns the most respectful and effective ways, so they send their emails, they contact and meet with their admins, who then in return either deny any of these claims and without the least bit of sincerity apologize for the mishap or misunderstanding. So from the school district view of this issue, the problem's resolved. Parents walk away, emails are stopped, the grievances are no longer to be heard. What we don't realize is these families are now leaving our public schools. It's not my opinion on that, it's proven in the numbers. I believe it was this year, we were dropped, our enrollment dropped by eight thousand. We are now, we are, what I believe is the seventh largest district in the country. I'm not sure where we are now. We are also now known as the hub for homeschooling. Congratulations, we have families feeling our district. Mike, I'm curious what we have.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Randolph Dallupinari, and first of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for what you do. It's only been recently that I've come to a full realization of the awesome task that you have. And you know, as we, as I stand here today and we talk about the two books in question, you know the content, it's been read to you. You've got, you've got to dig inside your heart, what is the right thing to do? And as I was sitting here listening to, okay, these books have been vetted, I, I recall what happened down in Miami, where the, the same people that vetted these books, the superintendent was asked to read the first page of, of one book and couldn't do it. So we've got a process problem, a procedural problem. And you know what? Growing up, I've always heard, it takes a village. So allow us to be part of that village, to correct something that was wrong, but prevent it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ash, and I'm a queer mother. Let me be very clear, being queer is not a downfall, Carmen, so get over yourself. I first want to thank the board members for the previous years of allyship and being on the right side of history when reviewing and approving the very books we are here speaking on today. With that said, I'm here to address board members, parents, and students. History teaches us that when those in power fear freedom, they ban books. Nazi Germany burned them to control thought, the American South outlawed literacy for the enslaved because reading meant liberation. Even Galileo's writings were censored for challenging authority. Banning books does not erase truth. It erases a child's chance to discover it. It denies curiosity and it weakens critical thinking. The strength of truth and literacy depends on access, because knowledge locked away is knowledge lost. Honesty, because hiding history creates propaganda. Diversity, because democracy requires many voices. Courage, because learning is not about comfort, it is about growth. Trust, trust in our teachers, our librarians, the parents and the students, to think for themselves. When we ban books, we say, we do not trust you. We do not trust our children, we do not trust our educators, and we do not trust our democracy. Every book removed is not just the story silenced, it is a step backward, a step backward from freedom into fear, from literacy into ignorance, from democracy into silence. Hillsborough County has a choice. Follow history's mistakes or learn from them. Limit our children or empower them. Protect the shelves, protect the stories, and protect the truth. I urge you to please continue to stand with the parents and students with the same respect that you have shown us as a community in the previous years, and stand against the hate that the state is continuing to push through and into our communities. This is not about books, this is about hate.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Melody Marr. I'm a Hillsborough County resident and a mom. I'm here to discuss the overreach being done by the Florida State Board of Education into our local matters. What we are witnessing is not simply a disagreement over curriculum or policy, it is an attack on democracy and educational integrity. This misuse of authority, whether through backdoor decisions, political interference, or the silencing of professional educators, threatens the democratic processes that our schools are built upon. When elected officials are undermined, when community voices are ignored, and when educators are sidelined for doing their jobs with honesty and care, we erode the very foundation of public education, trust, transparency, and accountability. Our schools are not political battlegrounds, they are places of learning, critical thinking, and growth. Yet this imposition of politically motivated censorship jeopardizes that environment. It strips our educators of the ability to teach honestly, it denies our students the opportunity to explore diverse perspectives, and it sends a chilling message that fear, not facts, will guide our classrooms. This isn't about one book, one topic, or one decision. It's about whether we allow our public schools to become tools of political control, or whether we protect them as spaces of truth, inclusion, and free inquiry. Let's be clear, public education belongs to the community members actively utilizing it, not to politicians, not to special interests, but to public school parents, teachers, and most importantly, students. So I urge this board and everyone here to stand up, not just for policies, but for principles. Stand up for democratic values, stand up for educational integrity, and most importantly, stand up for the future of our children. And on a personal note, I want to say that, she's thirty seconds. I got thirty seconds. On a personal note, I want to say that if I had read more books that discussed self-harm and suicidal ideation as a teenager, maybe I would have felt a lot less alone.
Thank you. All right, board members, we're going to have to pause public comment at this time. We've advertised our final public hearing on the budget for a time certain at 5:01 PM, and we need to conduct that nearing, that hearing now. Those remaining individuals signed up for public comment will be heard after we conclude the public hearing. So we'll start zero one, final public hearing on the military- So we'll start zero one, final public hearing on the millage rates and budget for the 2025, 2025, 2026 fiscal year. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board members, we present to you and our community the 2025, 2026 Millage Rates and Adopted Budget, also known as the Final Public Hearing for the Millage Rate and Adopted Budget. Our budget includes all government and proprietary funds of the district and the proposed tax rate.
All right. At this time, I'll adjourn the regular school board meeting and open the Final Public Hearing on the Millage Rates and Adopted Budget for the fiscal year of 2025, 2026. Jamie Lewis, Chief Financial Officer, will now present.
Good evening, and thank you on behalf of the district for this opportunity to discuss the final public hearing tonight and the 2025, 2026 Millage Rate and Adopted Budget. As we begin tonight, as we covered in our first hearing, we just want to go over what are we trying to accomplish here tonight, and what does the Florida statute say about our purpose here for the budget and the millage rates? Trend law was enacted in 1980, and the requirements are detailed in the Florida statute under Section 200. The statute requires school districts to advertise the proposed millage rates and budgets annually. This includes these following three items, required local effort, discretionary millage, and capital outlay millage. The trend process, process informs the public about the process which was determined to add the, to add the property taxes. Florida state law provides for public input and for governing of tax authorities of state specific reasons to propose changes in the tax and for the budget, and occurs every year. The Florida Department of Education sets the millage rates. Local school boards must levy in order to participate in the FEFP program. The school board has no discretion to set the millage rates different than what has been authorized by the Florida Department of Education. The law is specific in defining the process and timetable, which we'll cover tonight, of adopting the property tax millage rates and improving the budget. Numbers reflected here, I mean, numbers reflected in the final public hearing budget are based on the second calculation from the Florida Department of Education, which was released July 18th, 2025, and the same one that was used in the first hearing. The four items here tonight that we'll be recommending to the board are as follows. We'll be making a recommendation to adopt the proposed, proposed individual millage rates, adopt the annual budget, approve the resolutions for adopting the millage rates and budgets, and then finally, the authorization for the finance staff to make all necessary tasks to ensure the compliance with the process under Chapter 200 of the Florida statute. As mentioned a few minutes ago, we are following the same timetable presented earlier in the month of July. We're down to our final two steps, and that is here tonight, and hopefully we have our approvals and we can proceed forward until tomorrow, where we will submit that to the following governing bodies. We'll be basing to the Florida Department of Education, the Department of Revenue, property tax, and tax collector of Hillsborough County. Our first item tonight is to discuss the millage rates. This should be very similar to what we saw in our earlier session. We wanted to highlight a few things as we talk about what is our millage rates happening this year in comparison to prior years. In 2026, our mills that are being recommended is 6.34 total mills. The one area we want to highlight is this includes one additional voted millage that is new for this year, that has not occurred in previous years. That additional millage was approved last, before, and this is the first year, and it's doing two things for our district. It's allowing for employee salary enhancements, and it's allowing for us to proceed with academic program enhancements, which we're very excited for, has been talked about at numerous meetings prior to tonight. As we consider that, and we look at 2025, our total mills for 2025 was 5.388, and so that is an increase of right under one mill at .952. The item that we want to highlight here is that if the one additional mill was not approved, we actually would have saw a decrease in our total mills of negative .048. And so just to clarify that, the additional one mill is what is causing the total mills to be more. If we did not have that, our total mills would actually be less than they were last year, and I think that's important as we see what that one mill is able to do for us, our employees, and our students, or our academic programs. The other thing that we want to highlight is, our total mills for 2026 is 6.34. If you notice back in our history, prior to 2019, we did see a number of years where the total mills was higher than what we're proposing for this year. And so we just want to see the history of the last couple of years and how our total mills were used and approved. To further explain this, we can see how the mills changed from last year to this year, and again, as we noted a minute ago, it's an overall .9520 increase as we move from 5.388 to 6.34 total mills. As we always go over, what does this really mean for our public? And we, we think this is the easy way, especially as I started, it helped me understand, and I think it helps everyone, as we look at, well, how does this impact a resident of Hillsborough County? So if your home was assessed for a value of $200,000, and you have your home set exemption of $25,000, you have a taxable value of $175,000. If you divide that by a thousand, it comes to a rate of 175, and you times that by the annual mills of the, of the district, and that leads to a, a property tax for school As we look and compare what the actuals happened last year to what is occurring for this proposed millage rate for the 25, 26 school year, we want to start with the taxable value that's assigned by Hillsborough County. In 24, 25, the taxable value you see on the top right was $182.5 billion. And the, and the value for 25, 26 is $191.4 billion. That represents a 4.88% increase, or roughly about 8.9 billion in value. That's important because we use those numbers to calculate the mills for each one represented on the board that you see before you tonight. In 24, 25, our final proceeds that you'll see on the bottom is $943.9 million. This year for 25, 26, we budget at a 96% collection rate, and that is an estimated total of $1.16 billion, or a $220.9 million increase. It's important to note that the additional one mill that we just spoke about, well, is a, is going to be 183.7 of the $220.9 million increase. And so you can see the majority of the increase, or 83% of the increase that we're seeing from mills, is directly related to the additional voted one mill for our people, our personnel, and for academic programs. The Finance Department makes this recommendation to the board, is to adopt the proposed millage rates as follows, the state required local effort of 3.0920, discretionary operating of .7480 mills, additional voted millage of one mill, local capital outlay of 1.5 mill, for a total millage package of 6.34.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I need a motion in a second to adopt the fiscal year 2025, 2026 millage rates as presented. I have a motion by Member Gray, and a second by Member Washington. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board concerning the millage rates or rollback rates? Anyone? Okay. Seeing none, board members? Oh. Oh, where? No, it's for the public first, and then I'll ask the board members. So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm asking if there's anyone from the public who wants to speak on that. Okay. Seeing no one from the public, board members, do you have any questions or comments specifically regarding millage rates or rollback rates as presented? And I see Member Gray, you're in the queue, you may speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to Mr. Lewis, when we look at the comparison of millage rates in 2025, we see the 6.34, but yet in 2008, 2009, 10, 11, 12, the actual millage rate were, was higher. Can you explain that the trend is not necessarily going higher with the millage, we're actually lower historically, if you average and take the mean average of the mills for those years? Why, why are we not getting or asking for a higher millage rate?
That's a great question. So I think as we look at this, there's a couple of factors that do affect that. The mills is part of a local collaborative effort along with the Florida Department of Education which sets that. And so as we see in that history slide that we had a few minutes ago, we do see, to your point, back in 2019, the total mills was 6.414, and now we're just back to 6.34, but for a number of years, we were below six mills. Local capital improvement, which has done a lot of great things for our district and a lot of good work for our facilities, that has remained consistent throughout the year. The discretionary local, which is an adjustment that's done, that's been also remained consistent, but the local required effort has changed, and there's a process for that, but that's really the, that's been the differing factor of that. Now, when you look from a dollar standpoint, this plays a role, but also the assessed value also plays a role. And so dependent upon what the value of properties are assigned by the property appraiser, that will have a direct impact on the, the amount of funds that come into our district. And so as we mentioned earlier, the value increased by almost 5%, 4.88, and that, that increase, or whatever that value is, is really the primary driver that will reflect what the income or the revenue will be for the district.
And I appreciate the work you've done, and I appreciate this presentation. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Member Gray. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Mr. Lewis, I just wanted to clarify and make sure I'm looking at the documents I have. You had sent us an email that had, let's see, it was sent Monday, and it had a budget summary or budget update attached to it, which was very helpful, by the way, thank you. On the first page, it listed from 2022 to 2026 the millage rates, and then on the second page is where I need some clarification. So if we look at the chart, it has federal, state, and local revenue. Is the local piece which is reflected from the millage, is that the money we've gotten from the millage each year?
Yes, ma'am, that's where that would be located.
Okay, so I guess what I'm reading is even though we've had 5.4, 5.48, and then 5.4, and then 5.3, we've seen a trajectory going down, we're still taking in more money than the previous year in property taxes.
That's correct, and a lot of that depends on the value that is assigned to the properties.
Right, okay. I just, even though the millage is going down, we're still, money, more money is coming in.
You have to consider both. There's, you have total mills, which is obviously the factor that we're able to times it by.
Right.
Really, that's going to be driven by the property values, which could go up or down depending on the year.
Yeah, and over the years, they've done nothing but rise greatly, so it's been in our favor, thank goodness. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Member Randon?
Yes, I just want, also want to make clarification, based upon our income that we get in from our federal, state, and local, and our, our millage rate will also depend on, that looks at our value and how we are set right by the state, right? So because we are a situation where we are student-rich, property-poor, compared to another county like Sarasota, Sarasota does not have to wait for their amount of money to equa, make us equitable to their county, because they bring in more local effort than we do. And so because we don't bring in enough local effort to match our student population, we have to wait for the state to rectify us with our FTEs, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, and that's why it goes through that process.
Okay, so even though we've lowered our local rate, we're bringing in more money, but we are still short in comparison to other districts, not counting the one mill, which is to our staff and other things that our voters voted on.
That's correct.
Just the 5.38.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
All right. Seeing that there are no more questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion, the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Lewis, please continue.
Thank you. Our next item for recommendation is the 25, 26 budget, and so we're reviewing a couple of the highlights here tonight. We reviewed several of these things through prior board meetings, and we want to highlight a few things that we think is going to be helpful as we consider this. I think one of the things to consider as we approve the 25, 26 budget is to kind of think about what happened last year, and, and how did we get to this point? And so we just want to highlight a few things, and I know that might be covered in the other board agenda item, but it helps us understand the fund balance that we got to, which is a big reason of why we're able to present the budget here tonight. In 2024, our ending fund balance was $396.8 million, and we were able to navigate through that, through several challenges and changes throughout our year, and we're happy to report that that ending fund balance ended at 200 and, oh, I just lost my point, $293.3 million, which is 16%. That's important because that sets the starting stage of what we're able to use this current year in the 25, 26 presentation. And so as we consider here tonight, the 25, 26 budget is built upon the following recommendations. The beginning fund balance of $293.3 million, or 16%. And our primary sources of revenue are from, as mentioned earlier, the federal, state, and local. In FY '26, that'll be, that will equate to $2.3 billion, and that is an increase of $171.9 million from the actual results from last year. Want to emphasize that because the $171.9 million increase does include the additional one mill that was approved, which is $183.7 million budgeted. And the point we want to make is, if we did not receive that additional one mill revenue, our revenue from last year actual, would have actually decreased by $11.7 million in total, or negative .6%. And so you see, one thing you have to consider, because we have something new from a millage package, as you see that revenue increase, there's a driver that's causing that to increase. If that was removed, we actually would have saw less revenue from last year, actual results, to this year's budgeted, and that's related to a number of factors, but as we all know, our enrollment is a primary driver for many things that we do here in the district. From an expense standpoint, we saw an overall increase from actual results last year to this year of $143.9 million, or a 6.4% increase in our expenditures. Now, we want to clarify that a little bit. In our expenditures, $32 million of that will be related to charter schools, which they get a portion of our referendum, and I think that's really important, it is, is helping both groups, and so $32 million is the current projection that will go to them. But also in that, we were able to do several things for our employee groups, which was really important for, for the district and, and, and helping with that. We also saw our health insurance increase by $25 million, and we were able to take $48 million out of our general fund and reserve that so we can now qualify for self-funding. We think that's a critical movement by our district that will pay dividends for years to come, because now we'll be able to manage our insurance a little bit better, I should say, a lot more better than we have in years past. And so you, you consider all those, some additional efforts that were made, as mentioned in, in July, we were able to reduce district vacancies by 250 vacancies, which was $12.2 million in decreases, and district divisions were able to decrease their operating budgets by, by almost $18 million. And so that allowed us to make several maneuvers to balance this budget, and so the present, the budget you have presented for your tonight has an ending fund balance of $226.5 million, or a 10% fund balance, and the thing that we just want to mention is, since 2024 till now, the fund balance has decreased by $173.0 million, and a lot of that is due to the things that we've been able to do in our district for our students and for our employees.
Thank you.
So, sorry. Our recommendation here tonight is for the board to review and adopt the budget of $4,407,536,058 as follows, and you see that on the board in front of you, which is a document that was submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I need a motion in a second to adopt the, the budget. I have a motion by a member Gray, and a second by a member Washington. Is there anyone present in the boardroom who wishes to address the board concerning the 2025, 2026 budget? No one wants to speak? Okay, board members, do you have any questions or comments regarding the 2025, 2026 budget? Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Lewis, you have printed out a very good summation of the budget update, and I'm looking at the fiscal year 2026 and the millage rates. And again, the sentence says, it is important to note that even with the additional one mill, our district received a higher mill in the school year 2019, in 2022, 2023, oh, no, you have the school year 2019, school year 2018, and school year 17. And my question is the larger one. We have now, and the article was in today's paper, the Tampa Bay Times, the housing market, the property values, we're going, and this might not be a statement for you to, to We're going, and this might not be a statement for you to, to expand on, but we're seeing that the values now, homes are selling for a lot less. In your perspective, will this affect our overall budget as we go through the fiscal year, as far as the values of homes going down?
For this current fiscal year, it will not, because that has already been set.
For next...
Moving forward, that the district has a growing and deep connection with county departments, and I think that's important, to stay in connection with, with those areas. For this example, the property appraiser's office, to better understand what is happening. Throughout this current proposal, as we got to here tonight, our budget team kept in constant contact with them to understand what, what was happening, or what way they thought was happening, and we're always being aware of that. And so that is something that we have to continue to monitor and look, but as you said, that we, these items are dependent upon the values in Hillsborough County.
It's such a complicated conversation, and I don't pretend to know all the details, and you've made it very, much more clear. But I do know there's so many variables, and we're very much acutely aware that our budget is getting less and less per school year. So those, that's the rationale for my questions and concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Gray. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Mr. Lewis, I just have a question for you. One, well, a comment and a question. So one commenting is, you know, I know that there were a lot of conversations around fund balance in the last couple of months, and I put forth a policy around increasing the requirement for our fund balance, and hopefully that'll come back to the board sooner than later. But we had a 16% fund balance, which did allow us to do a lot to support our employees in various ways, and, you know, overall, helped the overall health of our finances. In your opinion, why is it important to have a 10% fund balance in regards to the financial health of our district and our employees?
I think that's a great question. I think as we consider what, how things could impact us, and how quickly things can impact us, a fund balance allows the district to maneuver through that and have the ability to take time to make wise decisions. I think sometimes when you have to make quick decisions, maybe you don't always make the best decision at that moment, because you don't have the time. A healthy fund balance allows us to utilize funds at any given moment in time, if something was to happen, for example, hurricane, or loss of student revenue, or whatever it could be. Those funds allows the districts to be calm and to come up with a collective, good plan, working with the board, and to establish that and move forward. It doesn't require us to have, make a rapid decision. So I've always viewed the fund balance as that mechanism to allow us the time to make the best decision possible, so it has the least amount of impact for our students.
Because if we don't have that time to make thoughtful decisions and plan, what happens to our employees? What happens to our workforce? What is our only choice?
I think if we don't have those funds, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us and a lot, a lot of hard decisions that have to be made. I don't think it's something that I would say would happen to here or there, but definitely changes would have to happen at a rapid pace. And so, for example, as we started our school year, we wouldn't want to disrupt things in a moment's time because of something that had occurred. The fund balance provides us time to provide our organization to take the necessary measures to ensure that we can continue the best way possible.
Yes. It, it helps us stabilize our workforce.
Yes, ma'am.
Because of things like property values might go down, like Member Gray mentioned, or our student counts might go down. You know, I mean, yes, there could be an occasional hurricane, but you know, that's, it's, it's actually a bigger picture items that can really impact our finances. And, you know, we don't want to have to decrease our workforce, but you know, with a 10%, at least a 10% fund balance, we, we, you know, can find other strategies, use other strategies before we have to touch our workforce. So it protects all of our employees when we have a healthy fund balance, and so I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hahn. Member Runden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just a comment, not a, not a question, but as we move forward into this budget year, and we've reduced down our fund balance significantly in the next year, and as we move forward, we already know that we're going to take another hit to that fund balance, based upon our projection of our increase in benefits to our staff. I remind everybody, this is not an increase to the benefit to the staff, but an increase cost to this district. And so I would urge our district to do a better job in making sure we go out for better rates, we go out for better choices for our district, in order for us not to be spending excessive amount of money that may, could, or be unnecessary, that we could be using for other services. I would encourage to make sure that we have competitive bids, that we have competitive contracts, and we look at all of these necessary options as we move forward, in order for the maximum amount of money to go to our staff and not to utilize, to reduce that fund balance, because that is significant. It's going to hit this current fund balance for the 2526 year and 2526. And so we, as a district, need to do better, and need to do better in making sure that we bring better options to our table. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Runden. Seeing that there's no further questions or comments, board members, please vote when And the motion passes unanimously, with Member Gray being away from the desk. Mr. Lewis, please continue.
Thank you. Our next recommendation is to approve the resolution that's been provided for adopting the millage rates and budget.
I need a motion in a second to approve the resolutions adopting the 2025-2026 millage rates and budget as presented. I have a motion by Member Combs, and a second by Member Hahn. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board concerning the resolutions adopting the 2025-2026 millage rates and budget? Okay. If not, board members, do you have any questions or comments specifically addressing the resolutions adopting the 2025-2026 millage rates and budget? All right. If not, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously, with Member Gray being away from the dais. Mr. Lewis, please continue.
Thank you. Our final recommendation here tonight to the board is our recommendation to authorize staff to perform all necessary tasks to ensure the compliance with the truth and millage or TRIM requirements of Chapter 200 Florida statute. Madam Chair, that is our recommendation.
I need a motion in a second to authorize staff to perform all tasks necessary to ensure compliance with the truth and millage requirements of Chapter 200 Florida statutes as presented. I have a motion by Member Washington, and a second by Member Hahn. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board concerning the authorization of staff to perform all tasks necessarily to ensure compliance with the TRIM requirements of Chapter 200 Florida statutes? Okay. If not, board members, do you have any questions or comments specifically regarding the authorization of staff to perform all tasks necessary to ensure compliance with the TRIM requirements of Chapter 200 Florida statutes? All right. If not, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. We'll now adjourn the final public hearing on the millage rates and the budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, and reconvene the regular school board meeting. And we will now go back to public comments. So if we can have speakers 21 through 26, please line up.
My name is Chris Coons, and I was raised here in Florida, and I am a product of the public schools and also universities here in Florida. I'm one of the old people that still wants to have input into what I'll say are our students, especially since I have five of my grandchildren in Hillsborough County schools, from elementary, middle, and into high school. I just want to ask each of you to please consider judging rightly, as you have input into the books that are on the shelves of the library. I'm not comfortable reading excerpts from the books. Specifically, right now, I'm just wanting to reference Blankets and Identical, two books that have been mentioned. And as you've heard, neither did the members of the State Board of Education at their June 4th meeting want to read out loud these books. I want to read Florida statute 847.012, that says, "An adult may not knowingly distribute to a minor on school property any picture or visual representation of a person or a portion of the human body which depicts nudity or sexual conduct, sexual excitement, sexual battery, bestiality, or sadomasochistic abuse, and which is harmful to a minor. Any book, pamphlet, magazine, or printed matter that contains explicit or detailed verbal descriptions or narrative accounts of sexual excitement or sexual conduct that is harmful to minors." Both in Identical and in Blankets, there are depictions, well, in Identical, of child grooming by a father in sexuist rape, suicidal ideations, many sex scenes. Blankets includes mocking of a Down's Syndrome person, illustration, descriptions of masturbation, teens performing sex acts, et cetera.
Thank you. Next speaker, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Rick Coons. I'm married to the old woman that just left the, the dais. In 1961, famed football coach Vince Lombardi, on the first day of training, the Green Bay Packers lifted up the football, his football, and said, "Gentlemen, this is a football." And he started with the basics, the essentials. And so I asked myself the same question. What are the basics? What are the essentials for our children, for my children? Chris and I have six children, three boys, three girls. They're all grown, married, with children of their own. But when, when they were at home and challenges would arise, we would ask ourselves the question, what do we need to do to help them through this challenge? Not out of it, don't get rid of the problem, but how, what can we do to help them? How will we help them grow, mature as a person, be able to face similar issues in the future so that they could stand alone, standing on unchanging principles? So now, as parents, guardians, working with schools to accomplish the, our basic goals, our essentials, we decide too what's best for our children. Our teachers are entrusted for a few hours each day with their, with the children, the school, the library decides what it's going to do. But what are the essentials? And I would suggest that reading, reaching grade level in math, science, English, and all the disciplines are the essentials of the school. That's why we send children to school. This is the primary task. All the while, the children are being challenged upwards to a worthy and noble goal. There are tens of thousands of great books out there. Taking away two won't change any of that, it'll just help it. Aristotle said of education, "It's to develop virtues, honesty, self-control, courage, many others." And I really like what Apostle Paul said. He said, he tells us how to think. He goes, "Whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is just, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, any virtue, anything worthy of praise, let your mind dwell on those things." As was mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, the school board's goal, the school's goal, is that the children learn and excel. That is what is basic, and that is what is essential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Melanie Lacks. I've lived in Hillsborough County for 25 years now. Both my sons graduated from Hillsborough County schools. I was here in April 20 of '24, when the books Identical and Blankets made it through the appropriate process to the review at the board level. At that time, I said what I'll say again, which is, I support the right of any individual parent to choose what their child can and can't read, and the school system already empowers them to work with media specialists to put boundaries on what their children have access to. But no parent should have the right to decide for all families. The school board reviewed the different decisions along the way and made the choice, five to two, to respect the decision of the experts and the people who work with the children every day, that these books had value, were not pornographic, and should stay in the school libraries. Four of the five people who voted that day to keep the books in the schools were up for election five months later, and they all won reelection, because the community endorses this process. They endorse your thoughtful, careful, layered consideration of what's best for the children. And they can see the respect you have for the community and your consideration of its diversity, and letting all children be represented in the school system. So I ask you today to uphold your decision that day, uphold the process. I know you're under pressures from unelected and unaccountable bodies at the state level, but I'm asking you to please respect the communities that elected you and want you to follow these processes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent and all elected people. Today, once again, my name is Tina Williams Brewster, and I'm going to talk about communication, but not in the typical way that you think. We, you've heard me going on year 10 now, talking about communication. And last year, I had a meeting with one of a very higher district staff that said, you know, you guys have been coming here, but this is the first time that we actually understood. And I'm like, wow. So you're an educator, and not one should you think to ask me what I mean, even though I've told you? And I, I let that ponder. So maybe there's a miscommunication, as I'm often told when I'm in these meetings, there is a miscommunication. But today, I want to talk about, no, there's no miscommunication, there is a lack of two-way communication. And I'm going to read you a version of, a definition of what I think two-way communication is, and what's lacking in our schools. Moving beyond simply broadcasting information to create opportunities for feedback and dialogue with all stakeholders, fostering active participation and community. So when I come and I stand before you and I talk about communication, that's what I mean. There is a lack of opportunities for all stakeholders. Me and my husband, we have six children. I'm now the proud grandparents of two, so I'm still here. But I, I caution you all to say, really think about communication. Are you just regurgitating information? Or are you really expecting positive feedback for all stakeholders? And that's not what I'm seeing. While I like to think that it's gotten better, there's bullying. We've got to tackle this bullying. We've got to tackle the ESC problems. Just think about that. Are we really communicating? Are we just regurgitating?
Thank you. Can I call up Speakers 27 and through 32, please? Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Alan Brewster. I just want to say, wow. I, I didn't go through that when I went to school. You guys, I don't know what to say. I mean, wow. But I will say this. God created Family Institute, the first and the oldest institute on this planet. And God put families here to create righteous societies and to police those societies. I've heard all this stuff in here, but nobody never talked about God's law, or what God's laws represent. Morals, morals has been, they're out the window. They're gone, because society has these social ills. The families are supposed to police the social, social ills. When you have social ills, you have broken families. And you guys need to be innovative and come up with creative ways to bring it back to full circle. There are a lot of issues in these schools, a lot of issues, and a lack of leadership. And I'm seeing it because of my kids. My son plays sports. I see it in sports, the lack of communication. Some adults tell students, oh, this is a dictatorship. But students need a platform to have their voices heard. I've been saying this for a while. I've been saying this for a while now. And you have players on the team that they say, "Mom and Dad, don't say nothing because they're going to retaliate against us." Think about that.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Green, and I'm back to talk about the free space with the NAACP being on Gary Adult School property. Based upon your bylaws that you're reading right now with a political organization, you have to realize that they just did a political forum at Middleton School. Your bylaws read, "School facilities or equipment may not be used as a means of producing or disseminating to the community any materials that advance or promote a political party, a political cause, or the candidacy of an individual for public office. Students and employees of the board shall not be used to distribute campaign literature within the schools or school grounds." This is your bylaws. A political organization that's free on your property. You flip over to the next page. These are your bylaws. Somebody got to be held accountable. Gaslighting in the black community from these power structures is ridiculous and we tired of it. You can't pretend to act like you're hearing from us and not do anything. So the next step is, this district or the school mail system, if you look on the next page, anybody can Google Hillsborough County NAACP right now, and your address is going to pop up on there. Mail system is not used by the community or staff for distribution or non-school-related materials unless authorized by the superintendent. When are y'all going to start violating your own policy? This is your bylaws. It has to stop and stop gaslighting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Alexis Carmenati. I was born here 42 years ago at St. Joseph's Hospital. I currently reside in the same home I was raised in at 3115 West Cordelia Street. I attended Tampa Bay Elementary, I attended Roland Park Middle School, and I attended Jefferson High School. My mother attended Jefferson High School. And currently, I have three cousins at Madison Middle School, I have several cousins at Tampa Bay Elementary, and I have several aunts that teach in the school system. So I have a problem with Blankets. As a person who was raised here and has ties to this community, when you have a book that talks about peeing on someone and explicit illustrations of genitals and masturbation, that's not appropriate for Brenda, who is my 11-year-old cousin who tends Madison Middle School. And if she came home with Blankets from that library, I'd be upset. And for any person who wants to continue to read the book, they can still get it through a public library, they can go to Union and go to the West Tampa Library and pick one up, they can go to, they can go to Jam Platt, they can go to the public library on Barris. They all have them. What I don't want is it to be in a public school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sulei Ortiz, and I'm actually, I used to live in Hillsborough County. I now am in Manatee. And I had a whole speech about a cute little story with my daughter that essentially restored my faith in humanity, but after listening to everybody, I'm not going to talk about that. Because I want to talk about as the kid, undiagnosed autistic kid from a low-income family that doesn't have access to a car, and the only library that they have access to is, in fact, the school library. A lot of people keep saying, "Well, they can get it somewhere else." There's people that can't. And I find it very problematic that we are more offended about a book than the fact that disabled children who graduate high school are at a risk, or not at a risk, they're gonna lose their certificate that equals to a high school diploma. I find that more concerning than a book that all you have to do is talk to your kids about we don't give kids credit enough. We keep talking about them like they're not people, like they don't understand things. They understand and they see more things than you think outside of your house and not just in the book and media. That, just a thought to process. So the fact that we're freaking out over a book when there's so much more, worse things that they're dealing with than just these two books, they're doing shoot drills.
Thank you. Can I please call? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Can I please call Speakers 33 to 37? All right, you may begin. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lee Carden. The two books being considered today, as well as many other materials, are, according to the Florida Attorney General, patently pornographic in nature. "Your district's provision of them to minors is harmful and violative of parental rights and your obligations under Florida law," is one of the things that he has said to you in his May 15th letter. He cited two articles of the Florida Constitution and three Florida statutes, one of which is criminal, that are currently being violated. He described the materials as unquestionably pornographic, patently pornographic, gratuitously pornographic, beyond the pale, and said, "It is shocking the district is making these materials available to its students." He said many other things, but because he has said that it is harmful to minors and has no educational value, those books that are being considered today, as well as many other materials that you currently have sanctioned, it means that providing them to minors is a violation of the criminal statute. He went on to say, "Failure to affirmatively remove all materials with explicit sexual contact from student content from student access shirks a school board's responsibility to keep students safe and disregards your statutory obligations." So defending and retaining these pornographic two books and many, many others is not only contrary to the Attorney General's demands, but it's acting outside the scope of your official duties, which is very hard to defend in court. So I urge you to follow the law. Don't fall for the arguments about book banning and processes because they're irrelevant. The two books should be removed, and the Attorney General's request that all other materials be reviewed, all other materials be reviewed, should be conducted immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mary Platts, and I'm here as both a parent of children in fourth and eighth grade at Adam in Hillsborough County and as a compliance professional and attorney. In regard to Agenda Item 1.05, I want to acknowledge the Hillsborough County School Board for its consistent dedication to a thorough review process. As someone committed to compliance and the rule of law, I hold a deep respect for processes that are designed to be fair and balanced, especially when they serve to protect the rights and interests of all stakeholders involved. The books in question have undergone a rigorous review process, both at the school and district levels, and overriding these outcomes, especially under external pressure, departs from the district's principles and the collaboration that I expect as a parent. Our process does not need to be second-guessed by politicians or a few loud voices. Further, continuing to focus on book banning diverts critical time and energy away from the issues that have a more direct supportive our students' learning. In an age where the internet offers vast access, efforts to restrict books in schools are not only misguided but counterproductive. It's my first time speaking tonight, and hearing how many people here are not parents makes me laugh. And I'm rolling my eyes at these people, grandparents, that don't know what high schoolers know and read these days on these topics. I respectfully urge the board to stand firm and reject the Superintendent's proposed recommendation to remove these books by voting no. We want to model respect for due process and critical thinking, not censorship or circumventing established procedures. These values are essential to preparing our students for a diverse and complex world, one where we all want freedom, fair treatment under the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Bobby Kingsbury. I have been a resident in South Tampa since 2009. My children are grown now, but they attended Grady Elementary, Coleman Middle School, and H.B. Plant High School. When my kids were in school, I was one of Jehovah's Witnesses, which is a Christian cult that likes to share their views with everybody by knocking on your doors. When my children were in school, there were times when their teachers would ask that they do book reports on books that I personally, as one of Jehovah's Witnesses, I'm not anymore, I've gotten out of cult, but when I was teaching my children, they would ask, for instance, my oldest son was asked to do a book report on A Christmas Carol. Jehovah's Witnesses don't celebrate Christmas. So all I did was ask the teacher, "Is there another book that my son could read and do a book report on?" Simple as that. If there are books that parents in this audience don't agree with, then they should have conversations with their children, and they should tell their children exactly what I told my children when I was raising them, that different families have different rules, and that the rules for our family don't necessarily apply to other families, that we have to respect other families and their morals and their processes. So I am asking you to hold up the process that you've already upheld and leave the education to the parents. As a parent, if your child is checking out a book in a library, whatever library it's at, and you don't agree with that, then it's up to you, as the parent, to teach your children that we don't read those books, or we don't live that way, that our family has different rules. So please, don't make this political. These parents, these quacks from Moms of Liberty are trying to push a political agenda, and it doesn't belong in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendentaires. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and especially on this subject. And I wish that every book that we all could be concerned about was about Christmas carols. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and I am a mother of public school students, and I'm not going to go on about that because I need to use my time wisely. Many Hillsborough residents are aware of what I'm going to tell you in this brief allotment of time, but for a handful of you, it may be the first hearing. In 2022, while teaching in my HCPS middle school classroom, I was pulled to the door and told by a district-level employee I had inappropriately identified a 12-year-old girl, who I was informed should be addressed as a boy. I immediately welcomed the young girl into my room to her prepared seat, and then told the adult who brought her that I would not address the little girl as a boy. The employee's response was that I ran the risk of losing my position for failure to comply. Though extremely shaken, as if the moment were floating in some surreal space, I completed the lesson and made it through the remainder of the day. Then I proceeded to look into the little girl's school history and found some very alarming data that had been ignored by the district. I also received emails and Zoom calls from district personnel trying to convince me that I didn't understand what a vulnerable place this little girl was in, and that by not affirming her gender preference, I was causing her harm. I could go on and on about that back and forth. What, to this day, I still don't understand is how the district was willing to drop everything to immediately insist I comply with their disordered and evil edict, but they had not lifted a finger to address any of the issues that this child had faced that were in the data. The book Ready Player One by Ernest Cline has 44 available copies, and it is an example of the things that we are ignoring in our school district that need to be addressed. Virtual sex, no matter how realistic, was really nothing but glorified computer-assisted masturbation. At the end of the day, I was still aversion, all alone in a dark room, humping a lubed-up robot.
Thank you.
Hello. Oh, did I press something to start it? Pull the microphone closer. Hi. My name is Amanda, and I'm here representing the National Faith Advisory Board, America's largest faith coalition. On behalf of the members of our coalition that live in this district, there are several thousand NFAB members who are all in Hillsborough County and taxpayers. This is ultimately a religious liberty and parental rights issue. Parents should be in the driver's seat when it comes to determining what their children are being taught regarding gender ideology. Coming off the heels of the Religious Liberty Commission hearing yesterday hosted by our U.S. Department of Justice, we heard testimonies of students and parents whose rights were violated and the legal consequences that went along with it. So just take note that the nation is watching what you're doing here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we have the next speaker, is the microphone completely, is the little? Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Lily, and I'm a parent of a child in Hillsborough County Schools. First, I want to thank the board members who used their time in the June 17th meeting to recognize Pride Month. That recognition matters, and I'm certain you'll hear from us, many of us, next month to continue to ask for recognition for LGBT History Month. I'm not here today to ask you to not remove those two books on the agenda, because I don't think any amount of public comment can change that. That, however, is what I want to speak on. This is the most recent and blatant example of a pattern of erasure of parental rights in education. Recently, I spoke with my mother-in-law, who served in a nearby school district book review council like 20 years ago, in a county much smaller and much more conservative than Hillsborough. I'm married to her child. I know about the strict rules about what she allowed to be read or watched, and yet, when she served on that review committee, more often than not, she voted to keep the challenged books. She told me oftentimes, after reading the book in whole, the committee saw the value of telling that story for students who would see themselves in it. Also, they understood the difference in setting rules for their family and trying to impose those rules on every family of the community. The review process is a longstanding precedent and go to a full reason. Let's not go backwards. District policy says no challenged material may be removed solely because it presents an idea that may be unpopular or offensive to some. These two books aren't even being challenged for a second time. They are being fast-tracked to removal because some, specifically the State School Board and Zero Media Literacy Julie, find them unpopular or offensive. Does that not violate your policy? That's why they weren't removed last time. We are already at the point where the parent review process is being bypassed. That does not protect parents' rights in education, it undermines them. And this is bigger than books. The same shortcuts and overreach can be used on any subject, in any classroom, against any family. Today's target is novels that some find offensive. Tomorrow's target is looking like anything a politician finds inconvenient.
Thank you. Can we have the last two speakers after this lineup as well? Forty and forty-one? And next speaker, you may come and speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Gianni Hunt. I am a Hillsborough County parent of three, and I'm also a member of Magnify Voices. I'm also a two-war veteran and a former military intelligence analyst. I've spent years trained to identify patterns and threats, and I can tell you, censorship disguised as protection is a pattern we should all be wary of. Books matter. They teach us. They teach us. They challenge us, they make us laugh, cry, and they make us think. For many, especially our youth, books are lifelines. They offer validation, insight, and connection for those navigating trauma, abuse, and emotional hardships. And while they don't replace therapy, they often act as a bridge to healing. To remove them without due process is to sever that bridge. Tonight, I am asking this board and superintendent to uphold the integrity of Hillsborough County and Florida's written policies on book challenges. Books like Identical and Blankets have already been challenged. They've been reviewed and cleared through proper channels. That process exists for a reason, and that's to ensure that these decisions are made with care and not under pressure. Superintendent, the next time you're called to Miami or any other public forum and you're baited into reading some salacious paragraphs from a book, don't flinch. Lead. Reclaim your authority. Lean into the policy. Be prepared to read the whole book. Remind them and everyone watching, no book can be judged by a single paragraph. Let's be the county that stands on policy, not pressure, because when we bypass our own process, we don't just compromise integrity, we broadcast to every student, parent, and educator that fear wins. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Again, I know we're very passionate, but if we can please hold our applause so I can announce the next speakers. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Horn. I'm a current resident of Pasco, former of Hillsborough, and have two teenage sons. I drove all the way here today because I am passionate on this topic. I am very concerned about taking stories away from our children. And let's just be clear, our students are getting sexually abused and experiencing this graphic content in their everyday lives. On July 14, 2014, the Journal of Psychological Studies in Europe quoted, "Reading fictional stories of empathy in children suggests that there is an important link between being able to empathize with fictional characters and being empathized in real-life people." If one of our goals in education is for our children not to see gender, race, religion, or sexual orientation, but just see all of us as a human, fictional stories play a crucial role. Recently, my sister-in-law and I were talking to my two teenage sons. She mentioned that she was raised that black people could not accomplish as much as white people. I mentioned that I was raised that women were always going to be beneath men. And my two teenage sons looked at us that that was the most ridiculous thing they have ever heard in their lives. And I said, this is why stories are important, because it teaches us to see people who do not look like us, do not believe like us, and live differently. But we are all human on this earth. Matthew 22:39 says, "Love your neighbor as yourself," without any appendages, exceptions, and we need to do that. Our school system is meant to do that. I've heard other scriptures used to say what, but really, the message of the Bible is that we love all, no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see all the board members, superintendent. Oh, my God, I don't know why my voice is shaking. Wow, this is hard. This is really hard. But I love to see the community coming together. All I have to say is we can't censor. We cannot. Everyone that came before me that talked for you to uphold your original decision, they spoke much better than I'm speaking. I don't have a lot of the actual talking points, but it's so important. So my daughter went to Northwest Elementary, let's see, Walker Middle School, and then Sickles High School, and she's in the LGBTQ community. She met her first girlfriend on the flag football team. It was amazing. And so we just have to not censor things. There's rumors that the Anne Frank Book has been censored, and I looked up, and it's not technically censored in the state, only one version of it was. But I went to Amsterdam this summer, and there was the museum, the Holocaust Museum and the actual house where you can go to see where Anne Frank is. And students have to read that. Next thing, it's going to be Anne Frank, and they're going to want to ban it completely because one thought she had on a couple nights when she was, you know, held really as a hostage. I also went to Ghana this summer on a Semester at Sea program. It's a floating university for our students, and we went to the Cape Coast Castle, and it was not a castle. It was the horror of horrors that what they did to slaves before they shipped them off on the Cape Coast. So next, it's going to be, oh, we don't want the kids learning about that. So thank you for your time. Please uphold your decision, and thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Betsy Braden. Thank you for letting me speak. My children graduated from Plant High School. I'd like to speak about banning the two books, Identical and Blankets. I believe these shouldn't be banned. This district's book review process should determine which books belong in the school libraries. I trust our media specialists that are well-educated in this procedure. I do not trust unelected politicians that threaten the livelihoods of our board, superintendent, and staff. The Florida Legislature is trying to destroy public education by banning books and diverting public school funds to private and homeschoolers. For many years, the legislature has also paid our teachers the lowest average salary in the country while spending the least per student. Despite this intentional destruction of state education, 70% of Floridians still send their kids to public schools. You on the school board have the public support. We need to stand up to these authoritarians. We cannot capitulate to them. For example, Trump cut federal funding to Columbia University. Instead of suing the federal government, Columbia acquiesced to them. In order to restore the funding, the federal government forced them to cancel certain courses and accept certain students. Columbia lost their academic freedom. Capitulating is not a good strategy because it never ends and destroys what you stand for. When books are banned at schools, it hurts the marginalized. These students with means can drive to a bookstore or buy the book online where others can't. This is an attack on marginalized. Remember the authoritarian playbook. First, they come for the books, then they come for the people. Currently, Florida is facing many crises such as high sea levels, rising housing costs and power costs. The legislature ignores these problems, and they use the distraction of banning books.
Thank you. Thank you. Last speaker, please.
I'm the last one. Everybody, take a big breath. So I started following—I'm sorry, I'm Trisha Long. I'm the parent of two current public school students in Hillsborough County. And I started following the choices of this school board back when we were threatened with state takeovers—that was like 10 years ago, maybe, due to our budget shortages. And now, our budget is not in the red, and we are still being threatened by the state, but not because we can't fund our schools. Members of the public could be forgiven for not understanding that a $4 billion-plus budget is just barely enough for a district of this size. It's still hard to be a teacher here and afford a house, even with the raise that teachers have been given, and the state continues to find new and creative ways to take money out of public schools, such as their school choice policies. So of course, I am here to talk about books. Sorry, but not sorry. The books that you're considering removing tonight, I think, are not on the list of 55 that were presented to the superintendent. However, there is a court ruling now that talks about the 55 books that were presented this summer and how they are not considered pornographic, how they are not considered to be under removal for state law. And I think we should remember that as we think about books being in our public schools. This is a matter that's still being considered by the court. We have a lot of other pressing issues. I don't know if you saw the news today about these educational scores all over the United States being much lower than they were even five years ago, and I think that should concern us all, and that's where we should be focusing, not on book removals, especially when we are just about to spend so much money on this school year, and we still have so many pressing issues that need funding in our schools. It's not enough. We don't need to spend resources pulling books out of schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came and speak. The board does want to hear from you, so I appreciate it. Now, we're going to move to employee and student comment, which is timed certain for 6:00 p.m. We will now take employee and student—that's okay, we have one, and he agreed to come afterwards. We will now take employee and student input. Even though we hear public comment at the beginning of the meeting, it's sometimes difficult for employees and students of our district to attend our meetings at 4:00 p.m. There are many ways for our employees and students to make their voices heard, including through union representation, emails, phone calls, one-on-one conversations, and public comment at the beginning of this meeting. The board wants to hear from you. With this section of our agenda, we're creating another avenue for employees and students to speak to the board. We are setting aside 30 minutes for employees of the district to speak to the board about any issue that's on your mind. This is not intended to be a discussion about specific agenda items on tonight's agenda, but rather an opportunity for you to speak to the board about any issues related to your job or the district. Each speaker will have three minutes. I'll now call up our one and only speaker? No, okay, our first speaker.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Rob Crete, president of CTA. And yeah, we're happy to be flexible. You know, we're teachers, we know how to do that every day. First of all, thank you, board members, superintendent, district bargaining team. The HCTA bargaining team reached a tentative agreement this week for both our support professionals and our teachers, so we're super proud of that. We want to be able to get, you know, our employees that money as soon as possible. So we'll be running through ratification real soon and having online meetings to answer questions from the employees about that agreement. And again, we're cutting up pizza, like a pizza in this metaphor, and we got to cut it up into little slices, but, you know, collaborating with the district and on that, you know, with those teams to find that the most equitable way to do that in a state that's defunding our public schools right in front of us and diverting our public money to private schools. And I want to also say that we're getting a great discount. This district is getting a great discount for the great work that our teachers and support professionals are doing out there every day. I'm going to different schools every single morning, and I can tell you that I'm proud of the work that they're doing, and, you know, you can just see it, you can feel it, and you can hear it in the students and the employees every day. So when you guys are out there, I hope that you get to experience that as well, because they are doing an amazing job for—and they all deserve not only a piece of pizza, they deserve a whole pizzeria for the work that they are doing. But I'm also here to talk about that every day does matter, and we learned that really through the pandemic. When students were then asked to go, you know, learn in front of a computer screen, as many of these homeschooling programs are doing now, we learned the importance of the classroom experience. And I want to be clear that HCTA supports getting kids to school every single day. We know how important it is to get them in front of those teachers that are highly qualified, the support professionals that are meeting their needs. But I want to also be clear that, you know, after teaching in the classroom for 25 years, you know, there's a lot of spin and plates going on in those classrooms, by the way, you know? I had bell ringers, do-nows, objectives, learning targets, small group instruction, and then I was assessing while learning. I would do a chunk and check, chunk and check. That's what I would always say to myself as I'm teaching a lesson. Chunk a piece and then check that piece, chunk that piece. And then, we're taking attendance as well. So we try to show our employees the grace, but we also talk about the importance of knowing where our kids are all the time. We support that. Thank you again for this agreement that we have with the contract, and we hope to have ratification real soon. So thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Chris Adenica from Gaither High School. Trying not to yell into it. So I'm also a member of HCTA bargaining team. Last meeting, I came and was really frustrated about the seemingly lack of time that was spent, and I just want to first start with that on September 3, we met for a very, very long time, and I appreciate—I want to send my appreciation to the district and for their bargaining team to spend that amount of time there. We were there until almost 10 o'clock at night, and we all were zombies the next day at work. So, but what that told me was that we were really, really ready to go. We were gonna—we were willing to bargain. We were going to get. And even though we didn't reach settlement that night, it was important, and it showed that, you know, it showed that we matter. So I wanted to first show my appreciation for that to be done, since I mentioned it. All right, second thing, focus training. I'm going to come back to it. I hope that it's done sometime. So after I raised the concerns last time, I got a follow-up email from the district. I wrote back with detailed feedback, and today I received a reply. That reply was on the technical stuff that I posed as examples of things I don't know and was told to, in the future, contact the focus contact team. I don't know how to do that, but I'm assuming it's on Outlook or something. That'll get answered. The issue is, is how are we supposed to be trained? Is it the district's intention to train on this most important thing that we are going to do strictly through annual training modules and a Canvas module that we don't actually have to do and that we aren't given time to do? So is that the plan, or are we doing something else? Because I was told in person that there would be in-person training, and there has not been. And this is not a Gaither issue. So Dr. Cline isn't the problem. The issue is that this is not being taken care of. No communication has gone through that, and I shouldn't have to come here again and again to get this taken care of. So where is the in-person training? How are administrators being directed to ensure it happens at that school? Is it school-based, or is it something that district is happening? Those answers aren't clear. We're left to troubleshoot a complex system that is so much better than synergy, and I love focus so much, but there are things that we need to know that we aren't getting, and I shouldn't have to email 10 million times. Or do we want 10,000, 20,000 people to email the contact team on every single one? Thanks.
Thank you. All right, now that concludes public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Washington. Please vote when your lights appear. Member Gray. And the motion passes unanimously. I will now call on Superintendent Ayers to highlight our administrative appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Enos, we made it. Here we are. So, board members, you had one principal appointment on the consent agenda this evening, and that is our new principal of Benito Middle School, and that is Jackie Enos. And Jackie, if you could come on down, please. So board members, just a little bit about Ms. Enos. She began her teaching career with Hillsborough County Public Schools in 2001, teaching ESC Language Arts and Reading at Webb Middle School. And in 2007, she became the reading coach at Webb Middle. In addition, she served as the boys' head basketball coach at Webb from 2004 to 2009. 2013, Ms. Enos was appointed AP at Farnell Middle School, and she then transferred to Turner Bartels Kate in 2019 as assistant principal, where she's currently serving, until tonight, where she is now our new principal over at Benito Middle School. Congratulations, Jackie. Congratulations to you. Well deserved. Well deserved.
You want a picture? Yeah, right?
Yeah, we got to get a picture. Yeah, Jackie, we'll get a picture. We've been waiting. She's been waiting. Let's get a picture. Come on. Yeah, you've been waiting. You got it.
That's what Member Gray said. Come stand right here, right in the middle. At Benito? Oh, I saw it, okay. Congratulations. Congratulations. I know you're going to do a great job at Benito, like you've done at TPK, so congratulations. And your coaching, from the coach. All right, the following items will now be heard. C105, C101, C103, C202, C402, C601, C702, C704, and C1001. We'll begin with 105, Appeal of the Board Level Decision Regarding Challenge Material. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, the board received a letter dated May 15, 2025, from the Attorney General Othmeyer with legal guidance that required removal of certain materials. that required removal of certain materials and to undertake an immediate review of our current collection. In accordance with the guidance from the Florida Department of Education and the Florida Attorney General, it is my recommendation that Blankets by Greg Thompson and Identical by Ellen Hopkins be made unavailable in HCPS media centers.
Yeah, and Board, and Madam Chair, if I may provide some further context as you consider this item. This Board will recall that pursuant to state law, the Board established a process to allow people who had objections to specific material to challenge those. As part of that process, there is a school-level review at the first level that may be appealed to a district-level committee, and then finally to the Board. So there are three levels of review for challenged materials in Hillsborough County. That complies with Florida statutes, and the Board did its statutory duty by not only creating the process, but considering the books that have been challenged. As part of the challenge process, this book has, this Board has voted to keep some books on the shelf and to remove some. These two particular books, by a vote of five to two, after reviewing the record and considering both the district committee and the school committee, you voted to keep those books on the shelf. As the Superintendent said, there's been guidance from the state that he is now bringing a recommendation to you to remove those books. He does not have the power to remove those books on his own because there was a Board vote keeping them on the shelf. So that's the context of how the Board finds itself here tonight, and you are legally required to react to his recommendation. He's giving you a recommendation, and that's your job as Board members to consider that. If you are in favor of his recommendation, you would vote yes. And if you are against his recommendation, you would vote no. And you will need a motion in a second to begin debate.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C-105. I have a motion by Member Rendon and a second by Member Combs. Member Combs, Member Rendon and I pulled this item. Member Combs, do you have a question or comment?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Vaughn. Five years ago, I had the honor of being elected as a school board member. If you know me, you know that I'm not motivated by politics. I'm motivated by students and the belief in providing all students a quality education. That means meeting their needs academically, social, and emotional. The chaos and activism on both sides makes me wonder. If we spent more time focusing on funding and helping our students achieve academic success, wouldn't we live in a better community? One of the reasons we're losing students is because of this narrative that students are not protected in our schools. As a former educator and a mother whose children recently graduated from Hillsborough County Public Schools, I can say with confidence that what they learned was grounded in facts, critical thinking, and not indoctrination. Superintendent Ayers, the way you've handled this entire situation has increased the confusion and impacted this district in a negative manner. From the beginning, I have said that I do not want or approve of inappropriate materials in our schools. The Department of Education has made it crystal clear they do not want these two books in our schools. I strongly encourage everyone to focus on literacy and the needs of our students. That is why I'm in favor of removing these two books and bringing our attention back to the classrooms. And that is the most important thing, is focusing on our students and the needs of our students and stop this cultural warfare that's only weakening our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On June 29th, 2023, long before this book challenge was ever put into place for Blankets and Identical, I submitted a list of 200 books to the Superintendent of Hillsborough County Schools asking for them to be reviewed and removed from our public libraries. I believe these books contain sexually explicit material that was not fit for age and appropriateness for our students in our schools. At that time, it was ignored. I also came back later during the April 2024 in review of these two books. I continue to stand on the principles that these two books are age and developmentally inappropriate for any of the students in Hillsborough County schools. The content in both of these books are highly explicit. They border on pornography. If they were put into a motion picture, they would be banned for any student under the age of 17 to even be watching them. I personally read both of those books, and on several occasions had to put it down because the sexual explicit nature was beyond even my content that I would even ever want to read on a personal level. There is no literary value to a single child under the age of 18 and therefore should never be in our libraries. There is a difference in which we have got to take a personal responsibility to anything that we put inside our schools, to making sure that students do not have access to inappropriate age and developmental content. That is our responsibility not to use taxpayer dollars for that. And because of that, my opinion has never wavered and has never changed since I have been elected into this office. And I will constantly make sure a child is safe. If this issue is about suicide or other issues, those children need to get serious considerable help from our psychologists, our social workers, and our guidance counselors. They should never sit alone and read this material. This material is not at all about banning books. This is about sexualizing a generation that should never be exposed to this content. And I will not apologize for keeping it out of the hands of children. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank those speakers who showed the courage and the passion of how they feel about what our children read. Glad they are reading. And I appreciate the remarks and the consideration of the political vice that each of us are now experiencing. And most of you recognize that this vote does not necessarily reflect my professional nor educational background. I'm a former civics teacher most of my life in American history, political science major. And I do openly express the regretful situation that I find myself in as an individual school board member. I do not believe in censorship. But as Member Combs eloquently said, I do believe in literacy and reading and getting back to the business of education. I will support the Superintendent's recommendation. Or should I say?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. But I wanted to make those remarks accordingly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Dr. Han?
Thank you, Member Vaughn. You know, I appreciate all my Board members' comments, and I, I respect their, their perspective. Since day one, I have championed literacy in this district. And I really, like Member Combs said, I wish we were talking more about the academic priorities of this district, but unfortunately, we're here. You know, a year ago, I voted to have these two books removed. I haven't changed my position on that at all. But my position, you know, as somebody who really values books and children's exposure to books and stories to gain experiences and learn new things, I certainly want children to see themselves in books. I want them to read about maybe difficult topics that they're unsure about or trying to navigate. And those books exist in our libraries. What I can't support is the sexually graphic material that exists throughout these two books, not just in a paragraph or two. For me, it's, it's more about the belief that schools should not be distributing sexually explicit material, period, no matter what the topics are. There are, like I said, there's plenty of books out there for students to read and children to read that, you know, can expand their imagination or answer their questions that aren't so graphic sexually. And I think that we need to really look at the process on how we're onboarding books in our schools and, you know, make sure that the books that we're bringing into our schools can address the needs and the interests of our students without exposing them to sexually explicit material to this degree. This isn't about, you know, a boy and a girl kissing, you know, you know, on a date. This is graphic, sometimes violent, sexual content. And, you know, I don't want to censor or ban things, but this really isn't about that. That's, that's, that's an argument made outside of a schoolhouse in a society. We're talking about schools. We're talking about minors. And I am personally not comfortable distributing sexually graphic material to minors. That's where I come from with my decision. And I want to thank the Superintendent for bringing this forward and allowing us to have this discussion today. I do agree, I, I, I think that you handled this well, and I'm glad that we were able to bring it back to the Board for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Han. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, we, we have a lot to do in schools. I was just reading today on CNN News how we are behind in our studies in, in the United States of America. There are a lot of books on the shelves that probably shouldn't be there. We should be concentrating on academics because Hillsborough County needs academic, and we've been doing a hell of a job with academics. And we're gonna continue doing a great job with academics. I just believe there are certain things that should not be on the shelf for kids. You know, I'm an old man, I've been around a long time. And I understand many times how books get on the shelf. I think everybody tried to do their very best in this. We all looked at, we all wanted to be fair to people. But you can't be, you can't always, you can't always win because there's always something against you anyway you go in life, people. It's difficult times. It's difficult things that you won't be able to do, and we won't be able to say. And Superintendent, you have been working hard. We have been working hard as a Board. The Cabinet has been working hard as a Board. And we want to, we want to do what we think is best. And what we think is best may not be what you think is best. That's why I don't, that's why I don't believe in common sense. Because common sense for Joe may not be common sense for Shay Washington. So I am going to uphold and be with the Superintendent on this because he is the Superintendent of the schools. And you know, we got to work hard, we got to continue to work hard and do the things that we think is right for Hillsborough County Public Schools. And speakers, every speaker had their own point tonight, this afternoon. And I thought it was great because you should be able to voice your opinion. But at this point of the game, I'm going to be with the Superintendent to remove the books from the, off the shelf. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, first, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your representation. You know, when you went to stand before the Board. I know you didn't get a lot of kudos, but you did go and represent. And I know that was a hard thing to do. So I just want to acknowledge you for that. I also want to acknowledge the speakers that came tonight because everybody made their point, everybody said their, their piece, and I want to thank you for that as well. But yes, you know, we have to stand and remove this noise from this space because we have to focus on our students going forward, especially here in the seventh largest district in this nation. Coming back to support our students, being able to lift them in what they need in their education, and like it says, preparing them for life going forward. You know, so hopefully some of these speakers will come back and talk about the certificates of completion. Hopefully, they'll come back and talk about funding. Hopefully, they'll come back and talk about what the classrooms need and more supports for our teachers. And they'll give the same energy to that as well. So I'm also going to support you in your recommendation as well tonight. But also support everything else that you bring forward. And hopefully, these parents here will also support you when you need, what you need for your classrooms and these schools and here in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. All right, I have some questions for you, Mr. Porter. Is it true that the Penguin Random House case against the Florida Department of Education declaring the statute that's been referenced by the Attorney General prevailed and that the decision declaring the statute unconstitutional applies here in Hillsborough County?
Madam Chair, so and Board members, the Chair is referencing a case that recently, last month, came out of the Middle District of Florida. That's a federal court, and it was Penguin Random House versus Gibson. It's a significant case. The court and the publishers in that case sued both the State Department of Education and the local school boards of Orange County and Volusia regarding House Bill 1069, which amended Florida statutes 1,00628. The court found certain sections of that statute, not the whole statute, unconstitutional as being overbroad. That's, again, certainly a significant case. The state has indicated it will appeal. The appeal process would go to the 11th Circuit, and then ultimately to the United States Supreme Court. So it's in flux. It's certainly an important case and one that we need to consider. And if we were ever challenged in a court of law, we would cite that case as precedent. For purposes of today's hearing or agenda item, the Superintendent is basing his recommendation on guidance from the state, specifically the state Attorney General, who's the state's chief legal officer. Superintendent was aware of this case when he made his recommendation. And again, the, the letter from the Attorney General references not only the statute that is in question, but also the obscenity statute. So there are other statutes involved in his guidance. What you're reacting to now is the Superintendent's recommendation based on guidance from the state. So while the case is important and should be considered, you're reacting to the Superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, so I just want to clarify. A federal court found it unconstitutional, and yet this letter from the Attorney General is threatening legal action against us if we don't abide by it.
I, I want to be very clear on the record. The court found certain sections of the statute unconstitutional, not the entire statute. That's very important.
Okay. Thank you for that information. So fellow Board members, I move that we table this motion until we receive clear guidance from the state explaining how these specific books are alleged to violate Florida statutes and what legal authority supports their removal. This motion is not about avoiding a decision. It's about ensuring that any action we take is legally sound, constitutionally defensible, and based on consistent enforceable standards. And at this time, I believe that clarity is missing, and here's why. One, lack of clear legal guidance. The district has not received a clear explanation of how these particular books violate law while others do not. We have no transparency in how this list of 55 books was compiled and no consistent framework to reevaluate them. This lack of clarity makes it impossible to apply the law fairly and consistently. Uncertain authority of the Superintendent. It remains unclear whether the Superintendent has the legal authority to unilaterally remove books from school libraries. Acting without legal clarity risks overstepping boundaries and undermining Board governance and exposing the district to legal challenges. Parental rights and community perspectives are unclear and divided. There's no clear legal or policy guidance on how to respect the diverse views of parents regarding school library content. Without a structured process, any removal risks alienating portions of the community and eroding trust in the decision-making policy. Pornography. It's not legally defined in the Florida education policy. The Florida Department of Education training materials do not offer a legal definition of pornography. Instead, they reference a broad dictionary definition that are highly subjective, using an ambiguous standard, and that opens the door to First Amendment violations and inconsistent enforcement of the law. The federal court ruling on August 13th, 2025, a U.S. District Judge Carlos Mendoza ruled a part of HB 1069 unconstitutional due to vagueness. The ruling emphasized the statute does not clearly define what materials is prohibited, leaving districts without reliable legal guidance and vulnerable to litigation. Legislation attempts to clarify the law have failed. Efforts like House Bill 10 or 1539 attempted to provide clearer legal standards but failed due to serious constitutional concerns. This failure highlights that even lawmakers have not resolved the legal uncertainty we're being asked to navigate. And finally- And finally, these books have already been reviewed and retained. These two books were previously reviewed by this board under established policy with public input, and were retained through a transparent vote. Reversing that decision now without legal clarification undermines both the process and the public's trust in it. This motion does not shut down the conversation. It simply calls for caution, patience, and the respect for the rule of law. Until we receive clear, enforceable, and constitutionally sound direction from the Commissioner of Education and the Attorney General role, I believe we should not move forward. Excuse me, I'm speaking, please, and I'm asking for order. I didn't interrupt you anytime that you were speaking. Acting prematurely with conflicting legal opinions, vague standards, and unclear authority risks violating student rights, eroding public trust, and compromising our responsibilities as elected officials. Let's wait for the legal clarity we need to act responsibly in accordance with our constitutional and statutory duties. Thank you.
Okay, board members, uh, the chair's made a motion, and that means, um, to continue. That takes precedence. So before you can continue the discussion about the continuance, it would need a second. So there needs to be a, a second, or the motion dies. And the motion is to continue this to get further guidance from the state.
I see no second.
Okay, so there appears to be no second. That means the motion dies, and you're back to the discussion of the main motion, which is the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, I have comments on that, but I'll get back in the queue. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make it very clear that the matters that we have in front of us not only are regarding Statute 1069, in which the judgment was on, but it also reflects Statute 1003.46, Statute 847.012, both reflecting and describing inappropriate sexual explicit content and pornographic materials. Therefore, we're not just talking about that, we're talking about inappropriate materials that are put in front of students. In Section 1006.28, specifically in Section 2B5, any inappropriate for grade level or age group in which the material is used, that is not under question or ambiguous within that ruling. Also, I want to make sure that this is clear, that when we received the Attorney General's request to this board, it was not regarding these two books, it was actually regarding the way in which we processed the review of the material that was objected to in other districts. We did not have proof that we had done that procedure properly or at all. That's what we are doing. The superintendent is bringing to this board materials that he believes are inappropriate for our school libraries, based upon age and developmental appropriateness for our children. And so I think that alone should make us consider this to be appropriate to remove these books. I would also consider that we review the process in which we are reviewing books, because somehow these books are getting in without proper review or reading by content or getting, because in which this content and any of these laws are, we represent the community. At no point in time when any books or materials are coming into our libraries are community members even being addressed about their approval of those books coming in. We do not have a process that invites anyone from the community to have any part in that at all. Also, let's make it, understand that this process of one objection took eight months, which is highly inappropriate. There should never be a time where it would take that long for books to be reviewed. Second of all, I do have that I have taken now back to our district level, and additional books that were submitted for objection in June of 2024, which we had no record of receiving. I have subsequently brought that to the district for them to begin that process, because although I have receipt of that it was submitted through the proper channels, we have never reviewed that process. So therefore, as the Attorney General said, our process is flawed, and this is one way that we are starting in that process of bringing things right to this district and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Um, I do want to point out that I appreciate you referencing those statutes, but nothing has changed statutorily since we had these discussions and followed our process about the review process from two years ago. Those statutes were in play. So if there was something that we had done to violate the law, there were two years where the Attorney General, or the state legislation, or the governor had to address that. Um, however, I was hoping to table the motion, but since it's failed to pass, I do have comments on the main motion. I want to begin by clearly stating my position on the motion to remove these two books from our school libraries. This issue strikes at the core of parental rights, constitutional freedoms, and our responsibilities as elected official. If I vote to remove these books, it's not because I believe it's right, but because I'm under duress and facing explicit threats of legal actions, including possible arrest or removal from office. I insist that this coercion be officially recorded in the minutes of this meeting. It's essential, essential that the public and any reviewing authority understand the true context behind this vote. In May, Attorney General James Upmeyer issued a directive stating, and I quote, "The materials listed above should immediately be removed, and I'll monitor your actions to determine whether formal legal action by my office is warranted." While I respect the Attorney General's office, these threats are not grounded in sound legal precedent. Forcing elected officials to act against both established legal interpretations and the will of the public is unconstitutional. It undermines the principle of democratic governance. This kind of coercion is an abuse of power. It reflects authoritarian tactics that threaten the freedoms that were sworn to uphold regardless of political affiliation. Despite this, if I were to vote in favor of removing these two books today, it's solely due to the legal pressure being applied. I've spoken with many voters, and they've urged me to vote in a way that allows me to remain in office, so I can continue representing their voices and values. They understand the threats we're facing and the legal process, uh, I'm sorry, that we're facing, and have made it clear that they will find other ways to fight this battle. In our prior vote to retain these books, we followed the law and honored the findings of both a local review committee and a district-wide panel. These committees recognized the educational value of the materials and affirmed the importance of literacy, inclusion, and student access. We simply upheld a thoughtful, transparent, and legal process that reflected the values of our community. To those who came and spoke out today, I hear you. Your frustration is justified, but let's aim our outrage where it truly belongs. At the State Board of Education, which falsely accused our dedicated media specialists of being child abusers. At the Attorney General, who has issued threats without solid legal basis, and at the broader failure to provide clear, consistent, and transparent guidance around the law. Our educators deserve our respect, not baseless attacks, fear, or confusion created by shifting political demands. Regardless of where anyone stands on these specific books, we must agree on this. Transparency, due process, and the respect for the law matter. Abandoning those principles damages public trust in education and weakens the democratic systems we all rely on. Finally, let's be honest, these ongoing political attacks on books and classrooms are hurting our students. When culture wars divide our community and pit parents against parent, no one wins. Only our children lose. This fight goes beyond a single school board vote. It's about protecting the rights of all students, parents, and educators, and elected officials from overreach and intimidation at the state level. Thank you. Now, seeing that there are no, no questions or comments, further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. Do you want to give clarification on what the vote is?
Board members, the superintendent has recommended that the two books that he described earlier be removed based on guidance from the state. So if you're in favor of removing the books, vote yes. If you're in favor of keeping the books, vote no.
And the motion passes unanimously. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess to allow those who want to leave an opportunity to do so.
We don't, is my microphone, thank you. I know we don't have all, all board members back, but we're going to go ahead and move on and hope that they find their way back, but by the time we vote. All right, now we're going to do 101 Hillsborough County Public Schools Memorandum of Agreement with Junior Achievement of Tampa Bay Inc. and 3DE Florida Schools LLC Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, it's hard to believe that 3DE is now in its sixth year. I can remember when it just, we first got 3DE kicked off here in Hillsborough County, but now entering its sixth year. 3DE is transforming high school education by overcoming barriers to opportunity for students at Lake Chamberlain, Hillsborough, and Jefferson High School. Through a case methodology approach, 3DE integrates real-world applications across subjects, delivering over 300 instructional contact hours per student annually. This innovative model is bridging the skills gap in Tampa Bay and creating significant economic opportunities for all students by aligning educational experiences with local business needs. During the 24-25 school year, our 3DE students engage with 34 case partners across 137 events, integrating business and community partners into their learning experiences. And in the 26-27 school year, it's your next school year, in this, in this agenda item, the district will expand the 3DE model to include Brandon and Plant High Schools. And Madam Chair, that is 101 MOA with Junior Achievement of Tampa Bay.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C101. I have a motion by Dr. Hahn and a member, a second, a second by Member Perez. Member Gray, Member Combs, and I pulled this item. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And JA, as we, as we began it years ago, very successful. Chamberlain has proven themselves. Thank you Jake Russell. And thank you Terry Cisco also for being part of Chamberlain's success with his legacy alliance. You know, the only, and again, it will be emphasized probably by my fellow board members, but right now we see that they do advance our students in reading, they do advance our students to have above, above-average attendance, which right now is critical because we have a lot of students that are not coming to school. And very importantly to our superintendent, to us board members, our graduation rate seems to be consistent with the JA participation. The only concern I have, and Superintendent Van Ayers, I think I shared it with you, when we look at, they serve about 1,625 students, and I shouldn't say about, since I obviously got the right number there, and the cost would be about $1.3 million. So if we look at return on investment, and this is where my concern is, with deepest respect, Richard George, are you here? Yeah, there you are. Thank you for coming and staying here. My concern is that we serve ELL population 27,068 students. I just got this stats from Jessica De La Prida. So what happens is, if we're getting, if we're spending money and we're only serving so-and-so amount of students, when in fact, as I believe Member Perez said, 40% during your proclamation are Hispanic students, that's the only concern I have. So where we spend our pockets of money, which is according to Mr. Lewis in his positive thinking, you know, distribution of information, we are lowering the revenue, we were, our revenue is lower. So we've got to be very careful how we're spending the money. And I will say, I'm going to support your recommendation and JA, and it's just such a fabulous program. And Alex Singh, thank you also for all the years that you have put into this. But I believe this will have to be until we get a better sense of our economy or revenue sources. This will probably be the last time I can do that when I have the, we have the ELL population expanding and many of the human resources necessary to help them prosper and become, you know, the best students that they can become. Would you like to add any remarks?
Yes, thank you for your comments, but just the one point, I think it was 3 million that you mentioned, just for the record, that that is a three-year commitment with, with Junior Achievement. And I did also want to note that the funding source there, and that's out of our Educational Enrichment allocation, which is a categorical, categorical as part of the FFP that is for programs like this. And thank you for supporting this, as this is, as we choose which dollars we're going to spend in our EEA account, which again is a categorical, this is exactly the type of dollars that our EEA is supposed to be spent on to provide opportunities. Now it'll be six high schools in our district. So thank you for that, and thank you for the support of this item.
Well, their goodwill and their partnership has served our students in our district very, very well over the years. And this doesn't, my remarks does not indicate any of my lack of belief in what they're doing as a former instructor, but it is a very much cautionary note of our situation fiscally, and that's one of the jobs of school board members. So thank you very much. That's my remarks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. You know, from the very beginning, when I first was elected school board member, I was at Hillsborough High School, and immediately I learned about JA and 3DE, and I just really loved the program. I thought it was very impactful. I, for, for the first three years while in this office, I would team teach for the day out in the JA, and I was really able to see what the program looked like. I mean, I've been very active going to the Chamberlain. I go to events very often whenever they invite me, and I think Junior Achievement is a really great program. It really is what the future is, when you look at entrepreneurship and thinking outside the box, and we talk often about workforce development and the importance of that. You know, similar to Member Gray, when I first saw that this was coming out of general fund, I was a little bit concerned. I mean, we have to know that, I, I think sometimes, you know, we're going to do different programs, just like last time we did the tutoring, and it didn't impact every student, every school. So I think I'm, I understand that. My biggest thing, or my biggest, not concern, but I just want to make sure. The one thing that I get a little frustrated with, and if you know me, you know, I'm very clear, I'm very straightforward about everything, there are a lot of workforce development programs here in Hillsborough County, and there's not too many. You know, because we know that many of our students are choosing, just the other day, I talked to somebody who completed college, came back, and decided to go into workforce development. You're seeing often kids who are graduating college, they're not finding jobs, and that they're realizing they might have a better opportunity workforce development and entrepreneurship. There's many programs, I want to make sure that they're all treated equally the same way. I felt that, you know, Career Source, I'm on, on the consortium there for Career Source, it's a great program, but when Future Career Academy came up last year, I felt like it wasn't treated the same. There were questions that were asked from a certain workforce development that weren't asked for everyone. So I just want to know if there's a, when Future Career Academy comes up for renewal, and there are questions, I want to make sure that will trigger the same questions to being asked at any other workforce partners immediately, so we can have those answers. So either Ms. Rayburn or Mr. Brady, I just want to ask about that and how you feel about that.
And I know we discussed this absolutely, full transparency on both sides. Some of those questions have already been answered by JA in advance and provided to us, you know, in case that becomes the case down the road when, when any other group, you know, comes to be renewed.
So yeah, when I had the, when I, I received your overview and I looked at it, and I think about these questions that were asked for Future Career Academy, and I don't think they were asked, I don't think Career Source has come up, but these questions were asked, and I just felt we have to treat everyone equally. And so for me, I think JA is a great program, I think Future Career Academy is a great program, I think Career Source of Tampa Bay is a great program, we have, you know, almost 200,000 students, there's room for everybody to work together on this. So I just want to make sure that everybody's treated equally, and I think it's really important that our workforce partners are working together, and that there is so much need for our students, they may, you know, being in a JA program may trigger them to be an entrepreneur. Then going on a field trip with Future Career Academy may make them look at something differently. The more opportunities that our students have, the better. And I think it's very, very important that we treat all the different programs equally, ask all the different questions equally, and that's all I have to say about that. But I do support JA, I think it's a wonderful program, I think it really impacts students on a very positive way, and I definitely support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. I, I have never seen such transparency around data and financials as I have from Junior Achievement, and I also am the school board representative, so I have a rather, a bit more of an in-depth understanding of what's going on in this organization than other workforce development organizations, hence perhaps more questions for one than the other, which I have the right to do. So I will just say this, you know, there, the 625 students are what exists now. We'll have more students in this program when the two high schools are brought on board, and the first year it's a little over 300,000, which I think was about $170 per student. Also, I just want to add, you know, when they choose the cohort for 3DE, it mirrors the demographics in the school. So if you have, for example, a high Hispanic demographic in a high school of maybe 40%, you're going to have 40% of that population represented within the cohort. So this is serving all different demographics that exist in our high schools. So I just want to be clear about that. I don't think a lot of people understand how the cohorts mirror all the different demographics that exist in a high school. The price is, you know, we pay 30% of the total cost of what it costs to run this type of program, and 70%, 70% of the cost of these programs are covered by private companies or individuals who are investing in our students. And many of our students who go through the 3DE program, some of them may choose to go right into a career path instead of college. So it's, it can, it can inspire students to do all types of things. I want to spend the rest of my time, you know, reading a letter of support by certain business leaders in our community, specifically Nelson Castellano, managing shareholder of Trayman Law, Dr. Ken Atwater from Hillsborough College, Scott Price, CEO of Aline, Brian Murphy, our CEO of ReliaQuest, Ria Law, President of USF, Stephanie Smith, VP of Tampa Electric, and Patrick O'Connor, COO of Raymond James &amp; Associates. They have written the following. JA has been a trusted partner to Hillsborough County Public Schools for over 60 years, delivering foundational learning experience like JA BizTown and JA Finance Park that have consistently proven to be pivotal experiences of inspiration and preparedness for nearly half a million students ranging from all socioeconomic and academic backgrounds. 3DE builds on this legacy, offering a dynamic instructional approach that benefits all students by authentically connecting the classroom to the real world, building a culture of rigor, relevance, and belonging in partnering schools. 3DE is designed to deepen student engagement, foster critical and analytical thinking, and develop the communication and problem-solving skills that are essential in today's workforce. There are the very, these are the very competencies our organizations seek in future employees and students, cultivating through real-world case methodology and entrepreneurship and co-delivered by over 1,000 business volunteers annually who serve as role models to students and gateways to economic opportunity. 3DE is now implemented in 86 schools across 13 states, delivering measurable, replicable outcomes at a national and local level. For example, 22% decrease in chronic absenteeism, 34 increase in graduation rates, 55% increase in college enrollment, 83% of 3DE students see the relevance to school, and 98% of teachers say they're inspired to be a better teacher through 3DE. This program isn't just for our students. We have 120-plus teachers that participate in these programs across our high schools, and they benefit from it. If you read the data, you see how inspired and energized they are about their job, what they, they want to stay in the profession. So we're not just investing in students, we're investing in our teachers through these programs as well. So I want to thank the superintendent for bringing this, expanding the program. I also want to thank Junior Achievement and the board and Richard George for your support of the existing four schools and the expansion into Plant and Brandon High Schools. I'm excited for our students. I think they have so many opportunities, you know, through this program to develop their interests and learn all the skills that are necessary to be successful in life. And so I'm going to support this agenda item, if you haven't already guessed.
There's a lot of passion in this room tonight. Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you for bringing this item and adding on to the two new schools. Since I've come on this board, I am very highly in favor of the 3DE program, not only 3DE, but Junior Achievement itself. I remember when my kids have gone through Junior Achievement over the years, and so it's always been a highlight in our family to the lessons they have learned about entrepreneurship, how our community works, things that we can do, those life lessons that start from the fifth grade to the eighth grade and then now into high school. But an entrepreneurship is so much more than just learning about creating a business. It's about empowering us to see further, look to be innovative, look to take those lessons and take it to other parts of our lives. I also appreciate the community that you bring into this. I met with Ty today about young entrepreneurs and how they are directly mentoring many of the students and helping them build those businesses and those success stories. The University of South Florida and their Entrepreneur Program, working with 3DE as well as our other entrepreneurship programs throughout Hillsborough County. And so I am so very thankful that this is a program that we're expanding to the east side of the county. I have been saying, east of 75 has got to have a little bit, so I really appreciate that very much. Brandon High School is doing a phenomenal job, and this is just going to elevate these young learners, and I'm super excited about that. Thank you so much.
No, thank you, Member Rendon. All right, so first of all, I want to start off by saying, I've had this conversation. I support 3DE from the experiences that I've had with it. I've seen it done at Hillsborough, I've seen it done at Chamberlain. I'm always blown away by how much work the kids put into it. You know, I have only seen the culmination product and then, I mean, culminating product and project, and some of the, I've been to Chamberlain where they've sold things, and I don't disagree on any level that this is not an impactful, important program. What I do have questions about, Mr. Lewis, yeah, Mr. Lewis, is I'm confused. Okay, so originally it was tagged as general fund, then we went back and we re-tagged it as, what I was under the understanding was SE, SEA dollars?
SAI.
SAI dollars, which has been re-categorized.
2023 SAI was re-categorized as EEA.
EEA, okay, which is for enrichment programs. Can you give me another, an idea of what other enrichment programs are, just to clarify?
Tutoring programs, ELP, summer school programs.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So my question for you, Mr. Lewis, is there's been so much conversation around every single contract that we look at, and whether or not there is more flexibility per the changes in state legislation within the last few years to not necessarily have this go directly back into the general fund, but is there flexibilities, because, you know, we've talked about as a board, and certain board members have urged us to really look at every single contract and wonder or not, ask the questions, is there any ability, if we don't spend this money specifically only for these dollars of enrichment, is there any flexibility for those to go to the general fund?
I think the general fund can take on a number of things, if that's the best case. I think the, what we try to do on an annual basis is we have these, whatever you want to call it, unique funds or special dedicated funds, they have a purpose, categoricals, we try to maximize their use every year for the most appropriate way to help support our students. And so I think every year as those funding changes, it puts a strain on the district about, are we able to renew things, are you, how are we able to utilize those, because the funding mechanisms could change. But the reality is that this fund, as Mr. Gary said, is the best place for it, and this is the most appropriate place for it. The general fund could take it on, because a general fund can take on many things, but this is an appropriate expense for that, and we try to evaluate on an annual basis to maximize its use.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that very eloquent explanation of that, to make sure that I understand it correctly. Yes, it could go back into the general fund if we didn't spend it here, but from the way that you believe in academic services and our superintendent's recommendation, this is the best use of funds for it?
Yes, and just to clarify, the, the expense will go here if inside the fund that we're using, we don't use at all, that's a different story. The expense can fit into this fund.
Okay. So that's the first question that I have, because it is hard, you know, when we talk about financial difficulties, especially when we talk about our employees making livable wages, and we're talking about a certain amount of money, they don't understand, when we come back to the table and we have an agenda item and say, it's $1.2 million, which is broken over three years, so I do want to be clear about that. I think that is important, that's not one year. Understand the flexibility of that, right? Is this something that we're prioritizing over, something else? And that's what my questions and concerns come down to, because again, I don't have any concerns about the fidelity, the impact of this program. I will say, I have, I do have concerns about if kids are put into it as an elective and they didn't choose it, how impactful it is, because I have talked to some of the students who didn't choose it, and I don't know if they're as excited as some of the other students, so I don't know if we can do a better job as far as making sure that we identify the kids who really want to be in our programs. But for me, even with, let's say, a price tag of $400,000 a year, it's a challenge when we constantly talk about having to make hard decisions and what we want to fund. And when I think about enrichment programs, whether or not there's going to be opportunities to use enrichment on our kids who are still learning to read, like, I don't say that workforce development is not a huge issue or something we need to focus on, or even if it keeps kids in schools, or we talk about the dropout rate, or it gives them hope for the future, but when we have such poor literacy rates, and I'm looking at enrichment, I have to figure out, is $400,000 for how many students? 600 that we know right now, but more to be added between these two schools?
No, 1,600 plus.
1,600, sorry, I heard that wrong. 1,600 now.
And two schools don't have a senior class, and then we're adding the two And two schools don't have a senior class, and then we're adding the two additional high schools, yep.
That for that amount of students, if $400,000 a year in high school is the best way and the most impactful way to use our limited resources. If we were a cash flush district, or I feel like we had the money to prioritize all the things that we wanted to spend it on, this wouldn't even be a question in my mind. It'd be absolutely, this is a great program. But since we're put in this position so often of having to talk about, you know, how fiscally responsible we have to be and what that looks like, again, it's really hard for me to justify spending this money when we're talking about livable wages for our employees and talk to our employees about what that looks like. So I appreciate all the conversation around that. I just had to make that clear, that those are my concerns. I don't think it would be fair if I didn't express that. And that's all I have to say about that. Wow, just 30 seconds left. All right. Is there anybody else? All right. Seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And it passes with me dissenting, but it passes otherwise. So thank you very much. All right. So the next one we're going to go to is 103, Hillsborough County Public Schools Agreement: Legends of Learning. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And speaking of EEA, this is another example of a state allocation. We want to spend money, monies on those, on our students for that particular year. Part of this categorical, so here's, here's an example here of Legends of Learning, which is a supplemental online platform that delivers standards-aligned multimodal science content for students in grades K through five, supporting both in-class instruction and independent learning. During the 24-25 school year, more than 3,000 HCPS K-5 teachers use the Legends of Learning platform to drive science and math achievement. This resulted in the completion of over 40,000 assignments and more than 219,000 hours of student engagement across the district. So that is item 103, which is Legend of Learning. And we do have Sarah Garcia, who's our Executive Director of Elementary Education, and you all know her, Tracy Bergman is back from the curriculum instruction. This is the superintendent. If you have any questions regarding 103.
Okay, thanks. I need a motion in a second to approve C103. I have a motion by Member Rendon and a second by Member Washington. Member Rendon, you pulled this item. Do you have a question or comment?
I do. Thank you. And thank you all so much for staying so long. My apologies to that. They knew that I was pulling this. So, and you're right, Member Vaughn, there are areas in which they're categoricals that have flexibility. In this particular situation, even though it's categorized in this manner, the way in which the wording of the deregulation allowed us to not purchase as much materials when we would have to purchase large amounts of materials. I'm pulling this because I want to make our district, we need to pay better attention when we just adopted an entire new science curriculum, even though the science standards have not changed for 10 years. And at the time that I approved that, that time, I said, is this going to meet the depth and the breadth of the standard? Is this going to do what we needed to do? I'm approving a new curriculum that we've not changed any standards. We didn't need a new curriculum. But yet, last month and then this month again, we're bringing additional items back regarding the science curriculum because according to our staff, there are areas of the McGraw curriculum that we adopted for the entire county that do not go further into the depth and breadth of our standards. So I want to make everyone aware that we need to pay better attention when we are adopting a full curriculum, that maybe we don't need to adopt a full curriculum, but we only bring in where we are short the depth and breadth of these individual standards because the standards did not change in 10 years. But we spent millions to adopt an entire new science curriculum, and we didn't have to technically do that. We could have done more on the additional supplemental pieces, which is what we're doing here. And so I just, as we look forward, the next adoption is reading, and we've already just two years ago, three years ago, I guess it will be next year, that we adopted an entire new reading curriculum. We talked many times that this, our district, we do a lot of changes, and we've seen a lot of success with our reading curriculum. So before we go into a full-blown cost amount to adopt an entire new curriculum, when the standards haven't changed, we need to make sure that we're identifying the depth and breadth of that spending of that money. And so that's where I think Member Vaughn was going. Can we make sure the money goes where it needs to go? And so I'm not doubting because the experts in my, the department have said there are certain standards that need additional support than what McGraw provides, and I think that's very well done. But did we need to then spend the initial dollar upfront? So I think this is just something we need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Gray?
You know, it's interesting, you know, in the spirit of what individual board members are prioritizing and which programs are better than other programs. I suppose I can go through all these vendor contracts and make those judgments, but I will say in favor, and thank you Tracy Bergman and your wonderful team, I don't know where Cory Murphy is, but she's somewhere, and Sarah Garcia. I will say, when you have a program that we've had before, has stood the test of time, has a three-point increase in grade five science proficiency, there has to be a little bit of credit for this particular package, and especially if we're looking for a higher graduation rate, we're looking for a higher amount of literacy, science performance, math performance, which both are indicative of need to put resources in. I will say this is a very well, well-researched, and I'm very, you know, very familiar with it. And Ms. Bergman, you spent all night tonight. Would you like to say anything in favor of this program?
Well, you know, I never turn down an opportunity to talk to y'all. Come on. But no, honestly, we are really proud of the impact that Legends of Learning has had on our elementary science. As you alluded to, the three-point increase largely was due to the work of Shawna Torado, our Science Supervisor, and her team in terms of just re-looking at our programatics, re-looking at some of the resources, how the resource could best be used to support not just the core instruction, but also our small group instruction to ensure that students can capture some of the benchmarks that they may or may not have been taught well in third and fourth grade as that test does spiral. So we feel confident that this is a needed resource. We know that our administrators feel the same way based on information that we receive from them. And we also know that the teacher usage, the more the teachers use it, the better their students do. So we're looking forward to implementing it again this year and seeing what the future holds for science.
And thank you for your commitment and passion for literacy and science and math and probably just about every other part of the curriculum. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. So I was looking over this, and I'm just curious. I saw in here the data. It says you gave an, a kind of description of the K-5 students engaged in over 220, I'm going to round up, it was 219, but 220 hours on the platform and completed almost 6 million standard-aligned practiced, practice items, right? Is that, is that the correct data?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you tell me how many students specifically that touches upon? Because if we have the data around how many items they were able to complete and how many hours we spent, that would be a good, that would be a good indication that we have some data on how many students are utilizing this program.
Yeah, so overall, when you think about our data usage, we had over 4,000 active teachers across K through five, which translated to 70,000 students, give or take, in terms of that. So it's quite a few. Again, it's available K through five, so it does touch on just about every elementary student. You know, and some of it, obviously, depending on usage and implementation at the individual school and at the discretion of the individual teacher, but it's quite a bit of students and teachers out there.
So 70,000 students would be the answer?
70,000 students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Seeing that there are no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. Number, I mean, sorry, next item 202, Articulation Agreement Approval Between Terrance Community Middle School and Dr. Karen C. Patel Elementary School. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Terrance Community Middle School and Dr. Karan Patel Elementary School serve students on the same campus at 10739 and 10736 Rollerson Ranch Road. The governing boards have signed an articulation agreement to allow for Patel's fifth-grade students to articulate into TCMS each year, and that is item 202.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve item C202. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Perez. I pulled this item. I just do have a couple questions. I had, I actually had people who reached out to me. So who am I asking these questions to? Oh, there you are. Hi, sorry. I had some people who wanted to understand this agreement. Even though Patel Elementary and TCMS are not, are they, they are not the same school. They're two different schools. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we allow arbitration agreements per the statute between different schools, regardless if they're the same schools, if they're on the same campus, if they're feeder pattern, like what, is it any schools? Where do we allow articulation agreements between?
Yes, we have allowed articulation agreements. We currently have an articulation agreement between TCMS and Dr. Patel High School.
Do we have other schools in the district that have these similar articulation agreements?
I think most of them are with the management companies, so they're different schools, but then they may have the same management companies.
Okay, so this one is unique in that, in that, in that it's different management companies?
Yes.
Okay. And just to clarify, I'm not sure who I should ask this to as far as legality. My attorney, Mr. Gibson, who looks very ready and prepped for this question, is, is, are we statutorily required to vote yes on this articulation agreement, or do we have more flexibility? I know that with charter school applications in general, we're advised from our council that we are statutorily, unless we find something egregious. Are we required to vote yes on this?
With that specific question, I think I would defer to Mr. Porter. I have reviewed, I have reviewed it for legal, for its legality as it relates to the statute, and I believe it is.
Okay. You believe it is? What do you think?
It complies with the statute. In that case, your duty is to vote for it if it, all the criteria have been demonstrated to have been met by the statute.
And so my question would be, to parents who have concerns about the fairness of like a lottery system, right? Because that's how we say that there's equal access and equity to charter schools or our own, you know, our own magnet schools is through a lottery system to make sure that there's no one who has, you know, an upper hand in the situation. If there are parents that are concerned that this kind of violates that and it gives a pathway from Patel Elementary straight to TCMS and worry that there are going to be families who normally might choose our traditional public elementary schools, but will now choice into Patel Elementary School just to certify and kind of, you know, cement the fact that they will have a better opportunity to get into TCMS. Are there any thoughts in response? Because I specifically had, you know, some administrators of local schools and some parents reach out just to ask about that specifically.
And I guess what I can say is this is one of, I think, seven categories of preferences that are permitted by the statute in that lottery system.
Okay, but that...
I mean, to your point, I think these are good questions. I mean, I don't know if they can be answered at the dais. I think it's always fair if you have questions of staff, in this case, Mr. Gibson, and the staff person that you can ask a question that they can get back to you with an appropriate response for your parents that are concerned about that. That way it can be thorough as opposed to trying to go back and forth. But I think the questions are worthwhile, and you definitely need answers.
Okay, so you'll get back to me on that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question, Mr. Porter, because if one of the board members feels that one of the items, like the, one of the seven criterias or whatever that we feel would be violated, for example, the choice pattern or whether it's from the random lottery system, we do have the right to vote no.
You would have to articulate on the record why you felt that criteria wasn't met. And what you're facing is a staff review that has reviewed it and made that determination. So you would have to be able to explain why you feel criteria number five is not met and say that on the record, and then, because we'd have to be able to defend that decision if it was challenged. And you would have to, you can't base it on opinion. You would have to have hard, solid evidence because that's staff's job to do that sort of analysis and research and make a recommendation. So yes, you have that right, but it's a hard burden for you, quite frankly. And you would need to be very clear and give specific factual reasons of why the criteria hadn't been met in your opinion.
Okay, but you still have the right to do that.
Yes. And if that's the case, what I would encourage the board members to do is have a conversation before that. So then when we get to the dais, we can, we can be prepared to help you vote in a way that, vote no if you need to vote it and sort of arm you with the, with the ammunition that you would need. Because again, we would have to defend your decision, and if it's not defensible, that puts the district at risk. But if it's something we talk about ahead of time and we can work through what your concerns are and why you think it doesn't meet the criteria and have a conversation, and then do it on the record. I'm not trying to suggest that we do something outside of the sunshine, but I think it helps sort of frame the conversation and ultimately make the decision a more defensible decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to have one last question. I'm going to try to go fast because I know everybody wants to get out of here. Superintendent Ayers, I have a question for you. Are there thoughts about looking at the communities that might choose these schools in general and going into those communities and finding out what's motivating parents to make those choices and replicating those in the areas that are close and pulling from these schools?
Absolutely. I mean, that's something that we're always, we want to, you know, as enrollment becomes an issue, not only here in Hillsborough County, but across the state, those are opportunities. We want to make sure that families have the information they need and to make that right choice. The Hillsborough County Public Schools is the best, best choice for their students. So absolutely.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Seeing there are no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to 402, August 15, 2025, Negotiated Economic Salary Proposal with Hillsborough School Employees Federation for the 2025-2026 school year. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And board members, this is a great agenda item here. Some great news. This is our HSEF Negotiated Economic Salary Proposal. So board members, thank you upfront. You begin this process for staff and allowing us the opportunity to do so. So thank you first off to the board in making sure that we push this forward and get this agreement done. The district and HSEF opened bargaining on July 1, 2025 and reached a tentative agreement on August 15, 2025. The economic proposal was ratified by 96.11% of voting members on HSEF. This include approximately, so just what is HSEF? It's approximately 4,400 employees, which include our custodians, student nutrition, bus drivers, bus attendants, maintenance, and security, among other job types. This agreement includes a 0.25% increase on the instructional support salary schedule with all eligible employees moving up also one level. Employees at the top level of their respective pay grade will receive a one-time set payment of $2,000. Custodians, crew leaders, SNS assistants, transportation specialists for FTE, routing and planning and training recruitment will be regraded. SNS production coordinators will receive a one-time payment of $2,000. Incentives including perfect attendance, safe driver, ESC, and alternative school routes for eligible employees in the Transportation Department will be funded through bus patrol funds. This, the estimated cost is approximately 5.2 million plus 3.2 million from some of our bus patrol funds. So I'll make sure from the record, you know, we've talked a lot about bus patrol here. It's the bus patrol that goes that we had in place for one year now and going right back to our employees, to our bus, to our bus drivers, those that work in our Transportation Department. I want to special thanks just to, of course, board members, you, but the team here, the bargaining team, Danielle Shotwell, just go, or start with Kelly in her new role. So congratulations to you, Kelly, in getting us, your first time through and getting us done. So congratulations, Kelly, Kelly King, Dr. Patton, Mr. Lewis, and Ms. Shotwell. Miss anybody? Our bargaining team. And then, of course, thanks to Iran Alisea and Stephanie McNeil from the HSEF. We were able to get this one done and get done and come before you tonight. So big thanks to this entire team. They worked extremely hard on this. Took a lot of late-night phone calls with, I think, each of them throughout this process. So thank you guys for all your hard work. And Ms. King, congratulations. Your first time through there. Congrats. And that is 402.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve C402. I have a motion by Member Gray. Oh, that was me. And a second by myself. I'll second it. Member Gray and I pulled this item. Do you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to echo Superintendent Van Ayers. Just what a wonderful bargaining team. And I know we have another congratulatory announcement later on, but Jamie Lewis, Danielle Shotwell, and then we have Kelly King, and then we have Charming Patton, Dr. Patton, and then we have, and Iran Alicia, he stood the test of time as well, Stephanie McNeil, you know, you guys are a powerhouse. You represent these employees so well and in earnest. And I know, and I think it was Superintendent Van Ayers, didn't you all spend a little bit of the night oiled? Maybe it was 10 o'clock at night. And, you know, it takes so much give and take that, but it was, it was a very successful negotiation. So thank you for your commitment. And I also know there's a lot of folks that are going to be very appreciative of that raise. It's very much needed. So I'm happy to see these results. Thank you.
Superintendent Ayers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I did forget one thing. So I do, we do have an email. So you notice Iran and Stephanie are not here tonight, but they did send an email that I did want to read into the record. They did send an email. So Dr. Patton, if you could read that. And this is from Iran and Stephanie.
The statement is, Dear Superintendent Ayers and School Board Members, on behalf of HSEF, our entire membership, I want to express our sincere gratitude for your support in approving the negotiated contract changes and pay increases during this year's discussions. Your decision demonstrates a deep commitment to honoring the dedication, hard work of our employees. These enhancements will make a meaningful difference in the lives of our members and their families, while also enforcing our shared mission to provide an exceptional service and support to our students and the broader community. As we celebrate this important step forward, we also acknowledge that we're, that there is more work ahead. We remain confident that through continued collaboration, we can build on this momentum to further strengthen our schools and the vital systems of our students rely on. We deeply value your partnership and look forward to the continued progress we can achieve together with appreciation.
Thank you. That was very beautifully read, Dr. Patton. I just want to take a quick moment. Thank you to the bargaining team. I know you're under an immense amount of pressure, being kind of caught in the middle to make sure that you're representing the district and, you know, all of that. I want to say thank you to the union who negotiated this. But more importantly, I just want to say thank you to our employees. This represents some of our hardest working, most underrepresented, most underpaid employee, employees who are really the backbones of our school. You know, we talk a lot of time about our educators. And of course, you know, they educate our kids, but the kids, the people, you know, who clean our classrooms, who drive our buses, who treat our students, who feed our kids are, you know, just as important as the educators. So I just really want to take a moment to thank them. You know, we always wish we could do more, but, you know, hopefully this shows how much that we really appreciate the work that they do. So thank you for that. Seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to 601, Budget Amendments for the Period Ending June 30, 2025. Jamie Lewis, Chief Financial Officer, will highlight this item.
Haven't we heard enough from him tonight? He's back again. Make it quick.
We have no presentation tonight, so we'll make it as quick as possible. We did highlight a lot of this during the final hearing, and I'll just kind of go over a few things. This is the amendment that kind of closes out last year in the last, in the last month of the year. Just from a highlight, and you heard this again earlier tonight, we began the year with a three, this is talking about fiscal year '25, the year that just ended. We began the year at a $396.8 million fund balance, which is roughly over 22%. Throughout the year, we had numerous challenges. CFO change, so you had, y'all had to deal with me. And we had changes in personnel. And all that was a transition for us, is we're still going through some transitions. In addition to that, we are aware that the calculations from the state were delayed, the budget season was delayed. So it's a very unique year for us in a lot of many different ways. One of the things that I'm very proud of our district in reporting is that even though the third calculation, we saw a loss of funding, our district was able to overcome that. So if you remember, we lost around $18.3 million in the third calculation, which was delayed. So that meant we had less time in the year to react to that. I think our district came together and identified ways that we could save that, especially at the district level, we're able to minimize spending, especially as we looked at filling vacancies or operating costs. And that allowed us to even overcome that. So the one thing that we want to highlight that I think is a really good point is even though the third calc did impact us in a negative way, we actually were to overcome that and exceed our original projection for the ending fund balance for fiscal year 2025. And so that ending fund balance was 290, sorry, I lost my spot. Too many numbers. $293.3 million at 16%. I think that's an important thing, and we've highlighted some of the things that we did from that. District operating costs, mostly at the operation level. We were able to remove 250 district vacancies. And I want to emphasize, people were not in those positions. We're able to remove vacant positions, and that realized the savings that then led into this current year's budget and allowed us to save money. In addition to that, we emphasized alternative revenues that we could bring in. And then the story goes on and on. So it's a really good story. That allowed us to do more this year in terms of what we were able to do, especially as we identified what we can do for our employees as we just talked about. And then the final thing that we all need to be aware of is the fourth calculation from the state is still being delayed. We do not have a timetable of when that will be submitted to us. Typically, that comes out around April or May, but we're still waiting for that final. So that could impact the final results for last year. We'll wait and see. We do have some things that kind of roll into that last calculation from an FTE standpoint, but we'll have to just wait and see how that plays out. But I'm happy to report that we were able to finish the year really strong, and that propelled us into the current year, which you heard earlier this evening. And that is our report.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C 601. Member, I have a motion by Member Perez and a second by Member Gray. Member Gray, you pulled this item. Do you have questions or comments?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Lewis, you have brought so much fiscal stability to our district, and it's so appreciated. And I just had a few questions. We didn't get the fourth calculation. Is that correct yet?
No, ma'am. It's still delayed.
So with that being said, will there be, or should we go ahead and be expecting a drop to our fund balance of back to 10% due to lack of the enrollment that we're seeing? And perhaps due to the high amount of family empowerment scholarships? Would you remark on that, please?
Yes, ma'am. Possibly see a decrease. I think we don't want to make any assumptions at this point. I think we need that the process play itself out, and we'll see what that is. I will say that if it is a negative impact, the district will need to respond accordingly as we try to maintain a certain fund balance. And so I'm hoping that we get word that the calculation comes out soon. There isn't a lot of movement from an FTE standpoint on that fourth calculation, because the year's kind of, kind of went through its process. And so we'll have to just monitor that and see. I think, we just don't know. And so we'll have to wait and see.
And to keep us posted, as you have been doing, and as you can see, Member Han is also very much fixed into the, don't go below 10%. And rightly so, since we once upon a time went to 3%. So we are very, you know, understandably cautious. My other question is, do you expect with your innovation, innovative types of thinking and your visionary thinking, and this is a compliment, two compliments, do you have revenue sources that we haven't thought about? And I know Medicaid might be one. Hillsborough Virtual, would you want to expand on hopefully money coming in?
Yeah, and I'll emphasize, this is a cabinet initiative. It's not just me as a CFO or our finance team. The whole cabinet is engaged in identifying opportunities for this district to exceed in different ways or propel itself. I think Hillsborough Virtual Schools is a perfect example where we have an opportunity to grow that. As we see the state kind of other part of that is growing at enormous amount. And so we're looking and emphasizing Hillsborough Virtual, our Medicaid programs at emphasis this year, where we're looking at opportunities to grow that. We taught how to workshop, I believe, back in the spring, and we're already implementing a lot of those and dedicating resources to it. Other things like building interest and anything that we can try to bring another dollar into this district, we're exploring. And that's going to be an emphasis. And those are things that I call alternative revenues. It's not our base type funding. Those are different ways we can bring money. Then all those things added up helps the district succeed.
And I thank you for that. And need me not ever forget our wonderful Stephanie Heaton. I give her a lot of credit. She has stood the, I keep saying the test of time. But Stephanie, you have done an amazing job, and we appreciate your work so much. Danielle Shotwell, you also, what a compliment you are to the team. And I hope I didn't forget anybody else. But Mr. Lewis, you've got quite a competent financial team.
We have a great floor that works really hard.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Dr. Han?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. I just, like Member Gray, really appreciate you and your team. All of us on this board have been through a few CFOs. And I think, you know, you have really stood out in the short time you've been here. And your strategic approach and working across departments to achieve big, big goals. I call them buckets. You call them stones, did you say?
I call them rocks.
Rocks. Stones, rocks. Sorry.
Rocks are hard to move.
And I appreciate that. I just want to get some clarification because of a Tampa Bay Times article that was out last week around the student numbers, the student loss numbers. Because I know in a conversation we had, you said that we were about 2,500. And the Tampa Bay Times quoted that we were down 10,000 students. That's a huge discrepancy. So I would like some clarification for the public, because I'm getting people asking me about that who don't really pay attention to this stuff, but they saw that headline and they were surprised.
So I'll start with, I had a Zoom meeting today with superintendents across the state, and this loss in enrollment is across the entire state of Florida. This is the same issues that we talked through was the topic of a conversation I had at 9:00 AM this morning, whether the superintendents across the state seeing the same types of drops in enrollment. So our enrollment, I think we are what, 177,428 was the one from just yesterday, which might have been the 19th or 20th day. Typically, if you look, so 177,428, if you look at besides last year, okay, and besides last year, last year's number was about 185,000.
And that was off because of...
Yes, ma'am. And that was because of synergy. We had some real, you know, concerns, wonkiness of whether, what that number truly was. And in the, in the end, when that gets to the state, that gets figured out by the time you get to the FTE period, it gets, it gets worked through. However, at the very beginning, we need to make sure that those numbers, that's all we really have, is that 185 number that we calculated last year. However, if you look at two and three-year trends, it was never 185. If you go back from 2020, we always sat at 181, 182, 182, 181 was that number. So if you figure the 177, do the math, it was about a 3,500 student drop, traditional. And I want to note as well, that charters are also seeing the same loss of enrollment. So the Tampa Bay Times article was using last year's number of the 185, also inclusive of charter schools. With the time of the article, charter was down over 2,000 students as well. So it was a combination of taking the 185 minus the 177, getting the eight, adding the 2,000 in from charter to come up with that 10. But it's important, and thank you for bringing this up, for the public realizes, if you look at our past three years, that number's consistent around 181, 182, which makes, which leads me to believe last year's 185 was a little, little inflated. Thank you. A little inflated. And Mr. Lewis, you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that if you look at every category beyond FES, the Family Empowerment Scholarship, every category has seen a loss in enrollment from a day 20 of two years ago.
Yeah. And I know that, we also spoke that you had some data from the state or the county that shows migration is, you know, it's showing family migration, or population migration leaving Florida, and fewer and fewer people moving to Florida.
That is correct.
For various reasons. And, you know, I think, I think there's a lot of data points. It's a lot of data points that impact those student numbers. It's not just one data point or two data points. And, you know, by looking at all of them, we have this picture of what's, what's really happening, and we can forecast better. So I appreciate the work you're doing. You know, again, I like the double-digit fund balance. I'm just going to put on the record again. Because I, I've been through years where we've had to let go of large numbers of employees. And whether it's in the schoolhouse or outside the schoolhouse, it doesn't make it any easier, especially with the economy right now. And, you know, to have to put somebody out of a job would break my heart. I couldn't have that conversation, and I don't want you all to have that conversation. So, you know, that, that fund balance protects us from potentially having to do that, because we can use that time, as you said, to strategize and figure out. And our surrounding friends in other counties are struggling right now with very low fund balances, because they started out with a low fund balance. And I know we want to give as much money to our employees as we possibly can, but we also need to protect all of our employees as much as we can. And there's, you got to strike a balance, you know, you really do. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Han.
Yeah, just a couple of things to add. You know, as we talked about, you know, loss of enrollment, multiple factors. But one of the things I did, board members, I did send you earlier this afternoon, if you look at birth rates in Hillsborough County, you will see it a significant drop, 29, 20, 20. Those years, it dropped significantly, and it's kind of leveled out since then. But there, that is also affecting numbers. So as Dr. Han mentioned, it's a variety of factors that's leading to this, these data points across the state of Florida. But there's no doubt Hillsborough County, the birth rates were down 2019, 2020, which are those incoming kindergarteners. So, you know, that, and we see it, because there are a lot of the numbers we just talked about, I think we're looking at what, 1,500 drop in kindergarten? Yeah, so there's your 1,500. So that right there is just less students to enter kindergarten in Hillsborough County due to birth rates. So thank you, Dr. Han, for mentioning that. Lot of factors that lead to this. But I want to make it clear that this is, this is beyond Hillsborough County. This is across the entire state of Florida where we're seeing drops in, in, in enrollment across, across the state. And my last comment, I was just, I just wanted to thank Mr. Lewis and his entire team, and Ms. Gray, you did so, Danielle and Stephanie, and, you know, throw Hong out there too, and the work that she does. I know she meets with each of you. You all love meeting with Hong, and the perspective that she brings. But as, I want to give credit to Jamie and his team. We, he's only been here since January. So it seems like he's been here longer than that, but he's just been here to the start of the school year. And in that, he, we had a tremendous number of challenges, including that, the second calc, third calc, right? Third calc. The third calculation, and the work that he's done just in this short period of time has really been remarkable. And if you think back, as we close out this year with $293 million fund balance, 16%, 16%, a lot of that was Jamie and his team coming in. And don't forget, we spent probably two and a half months with no CFO. And board members, I know you remember that, as we were searching to get the right person in this position. And we've done so. So I just wanted to thank you, Jamie, for your, your work and your team.
Thank you, Superintendent Ayers. I just had a quick question. I was on our Great City School call Friday, talking with board members across the nation. But there were some in Florida, specifically Palm Beach and Broward, who, you know, were talking about this very thing, enrollment, and what that looks like and what is down. And they said their staff has given them feedback that some of our immigrant families are not engaging, they're not enrolling, that what they're finding is enrollment is down due to fear around our, you know, immigrant families registering their kids, making sure they have access to education. Is there any way to gauge if that's a problem in Hillsborough County?
Yeah, you want to get that one, Mr. Farkas?
I'll be happy to talk a little bit about it, because we also check generation rates. Who's having children? We talk about birth rate, but also the number of kids that are in houses. But immigration's also a big part of it. The one thing that kind of would pull away from that is, in our communities that have a large population that fits that category, we haven't seen those schools drop more than the other ones. So it's been across the board that we've seen that. So if that is true, and we believe that is one of the factors, it is not one that's disproportionately affected one area as opposed to others. So we don't see, you know, a Y-Mama or an area like that has a lower number of kids. So I think it is, it is a factor, but I don't think it's the predominant factor.
Thank you. That's helpful. Member Perez?
So Superintendent, remember when I went to Puerto Rico, that I had a conversation with a few of the mayors there in different townships there in Puerto Rico. And they were saying that the population in Puerto Rico, on the island, is also decreasing. A lot of young couples are deciding to have pets instead of children. And I say, I can't argue. I got Baxter and Riley. I'm just, yeah, they don't talk back. But yeah, that's, but it was, it was a conversation I had with you, I think, back in June, that they're, they're noticing that decrease in population as well. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Member Perez. Seeing that there's no questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion, the motion, the votion, this new word, the motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to 702, Educational Plant Spot Survey, 6.3 for the demolition of the bus bay at Eisenhower Middle School and a change of use at Bowers-Witley. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We finally, Mr. Farkas, we finally made it to your items here. So 702. This is a quick, this is a quick one here. This is a new spot survey for the purpose of the demolition of the bus bay, building line located on the Eisenhower campus. Anything else?
Yeah, just to follow up. You already approved the board item for Eisenhower. We talked about the construction that goes with it. This is the plant survey that goes in front of it. Whenever we tear down, even though it's an old bus bay, that is, there's pictures in the item that looks pretty rough. We do have to get approval from the state, and that's part, that's what this item's about.
All right. Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C 702. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Washington. Member Rendon, you pulled this item. Do you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my issue with this item is it's not just Eisenhower Bus Ramp. You've included Bowers-Witley in this. And so consequently, also the number of student stations are inaccurate. I know we don't have more than between 35 and 65 students at this I know we don't have more than between 35 and 65 students at this particular site. It's not very clear on exactly what we're doing there. I've got no quotes. So Eisenhower is not my issue, but it's kind of like we swept in and brought in Bowers-Witley and that, it doesn't look right.
What part are we talking about that the student stations are not correct?
Well, when I read Bowers-Witley on here, let me see the page. What page are we looking at? Maybe you can find it faster than I can because majority of this entire item is Eisenhower, which I 100% agree with, and there's a necessary need for that, especially for the safety of students. But when I look at Bowers-Witley, it's saying existing student stations are 300, 637. And then student stations added five. We don't even have, we're less like 65 students in the entire building.
That, that is correct. But student stations is how many students could in theory fit in that building, not as opposed to how many kids are actually there.
But we're going to spend money where students aren't going.
Well, what money, the money is being spent, it's going to be transitioning to adult education for that part too.
But it already was. This is what I'm not understanding. It was adult education. We brought in the construction academy. We moved adult ed out because we thought that it didn't meet criteria by state legislative to have that combined. And although that is absolutely incorrect, in 2023, it allowed by statute to have both sites on one campus. We never moved them back. So now I'm going to spend more money to move them back to where they were before. It doesn't make sense to me.
So they're going to be, it's going to be a solely, it's a change of use, not that we're spending money at the, at the site for there. So we're not spending money for the site. We are, we are changing the use so it's for adult education.
But it was for adult education before.
It was designated with the state for nine through 12 education, which is part of the issue that we had before in 2023. We could do that, but the district did not designate it for adult education. That's what this item allows us to do.
It had a piece of adult education, right? That was taken away.
Yes.
The entire time it had a career field for its...
It was originally completely adult ed. When they made a construction academy, they actually removed it.
It wasn't. It was fully adult ed.
Okay, board members, okay, here's the deal. So you have, Ms. Rendon has the floor.
It's my fault, I interrupted you.
Yeah, please, I mean, you can't have back and forth. So I think you're entitled to ask questions. I have a question of why these items are linked together. Is there a reason why they're linked together as opposed to having two separate agenda items?
No. That's the honest answer.
But I think if we could get back to the questions.
Can I be quiet?
Yeah, and Mr. Brooks, if you give some clarity to adult ed, Bowers-Witley, what it, nine to 12, what it was, why, just get to give the background, please.
Yes, originally, it was a K-12, it was a nine to 12 school system. If we went all the way back to when it was originally created, you know, back, back in the day, they, it got a little weird because they started doing GEDs, they started kind of getting it all over the place. And so then, past superintendent ago, we kind of got everything straightened out and they decided they wanted all the adults removed. There was an adult component there. They were sharing the facilities they have since almost day one. And so they, there was a shared facility. However, on all the state forms, it was listed as a K-12, six through 12, or however, I don't know exactly, nine 12, I'm sorry, the usage of the facility. So then when the other superintendent came, he wanted all the adults removed. So all the adults moved off campus, even though it maintained the name, it's kept the name. And so now it's just the adults are going back and we're trying to make what the state has accurate to what we're really doing.
But when I vote on this, I'm voting that I'm agreeing that the, the other students that are in the other student stations are going to be removed from this campus. Because we're not going to keep it as both? Let's clarify that.
Correct. It is, going forward, it will be adults. It will back to just be, being the adult group that was there from basically day one.
So this is more than just getting a state approval. We're moving students and opportunities of students that we brought in here for construction academy, and we're moving that somewhere else. So we are going to be spending, because you're going to come back to me and want me to spend more money to go to another school for that academy, right? Because if I do this and make this all adults, are they no longer going to be allowed to be there? The students that are currently there now, will they be allowed to be there?
There's only adult students at Bowers currently.
Okay.
So Bowers went back to being kind of currently the adults. There was only, there was very few high school kids there over the past, since it was a building construction academy. I think there were four students in plumbing, and I think there was one in construction. So as those students transitioned and didn't return, the adults now are back on campus. And so the adults, there are many more adults. We have a larger population of adults in that community that need the, the support.
Okay, so there's no longer any children in those programs?
No, ma'am, no, no high school age students.
Okay. And so we're going to, but we're, if we don't redo this, there's no cost effect here, right?
Correct.
Because, is there cost effect here?
There is no cost, it's just a designation change.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Rendon. I appreciate you asking those questions because it is very confusing, especially the way that you combined it together. And I would appreciate, is that you, Mr. Farkas? More of an understanding if you're making more changes of Bowers-Witley, since that is my school and I have gone through the flux. And last time I went, there were more than five students in the career, in the construction. In fact, we were bussing kids over from which other school, was it Chamberlain or Freedom, to make sure that they could attend. So what I'm hearing is they've matriculated and they're no longer there. So what you're saying is going forward, this is only going to be a program for people who are adults for career. Is there going to be a GED program there?
Yes, there will be, but, but the thing is, GED can't be, GED is not for high school age kids. GED is an adult-only program. And that's what made the whole thing weird for years and years. Because we kind of blended. We got in a blended place that probably wasn't a good space. And I think what we're trying to do now is clear it up and say, here's exactly what should be here. And I think Mr. Farkas, the item is saying, this is what we are actually doing at this facility.
Okay, it would have been, and that's my fault. It would have been nice if it was a little more clear, someone had actually gotten with me about that piece that affects my school. But I think I understand it going, going forward. The question would be, where were the students who had an opportunity, loved and appreciated this construction academy? Like I said, I went in there firsthand. Where are they having those opportunities now?
So kids would be applying to Tampa Bay Tech. Tampa Bay Tech is a school. Middleton is a school where with their engineering program, a lot of the hands-on kids are looking at that program.
But that's not construction. I'm asking specifically for construction, plumbing, building.
The only other building, there's not another building construction program in the county. But building construction have one student though.
Okay. Member Rendon has another question, and we're going to keep you guys here all night. So here we go. Member Rendon.
Oh, sorry. I'm with Member Vaughn because I know that within the last two years, I was told there were more students there when I got the numbers that were there. And we had this conversation about a year ago in discussing the number of students that were at Bowers-Witley and the adults that had to move and that they legally by statute, they never had to move. We jumped the gun on that before all that. Now, again, I get history, they were all adult, but in the last two years, they did not have to be in separate campuses. So I, I do think we need to have an understanding of exactly how many students really partake in that program and what happened. Where do they go? Do they only stay a year? Do they stay three years? Because I think that information is important as we move forward and look at other items in other schools. If we had this program for three years and we only had four people do that program, I'm certainly not going to recommend it in any other school in our county. Is that our fault for not advertising it? I don't know, but I'm not going to, you know, we're not going to advise to do that. So I think we have to get some clarity on exactly how many kids, because if, if you didn't have adult kids there, that means we ran a school for two years with four people? That would be very poor fiscal responsibility. It doesn't add up. It doesn't add up whether it was 35, and it doesn't add up when you tell me it's four. If I'm running an entire school with four students because you said the adults couldn't be there, that doesn't make sense.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, so I want to be a little bit specific. I think you, when I, when you tell me how many are in construction, I meant how many are taking the construction class. There were other students there that were there for a variety of reasons. And that falls under Mr. Woods. And with his, they oversee that part of that, the building. So when we look at actually automotive, how many kids were in the automotive class? How many were in the construction class? How many were in the plumbing class? How many were in automotive? When you asked me those questions, I apologize, I'm speaking specifically how many kids were in each of those courses. Once we built that up and became the construction academy, it's, it was very difficult to recruit kids to that. And so there were other programs there. So when you walked, absolutely, you would see other kids. I don't, I apologize, I don't know exactly what those programs were, what those kids were involved with, because that was a different division, that's a different group that oversees that. They don't really kind of fall under me. So, so when I was speaking that, I was talking about how many kids actually came there for that magnet program.
Okay, then Superintendent, I'm going to ask that as we move forward on that, can we have a clarification of attendance and what categories they were in of attendance for the last three school years?
Absolutely.
Because I think that's important for us to understand moving forward if we're making decisions on other programs. Because I do understand that Bowers-Witley does have an ESC program there. It is very small, but that was not the majority of kids any of us saw at that school. And I know other members of your, of your cabinet gave me other information. So I think it's real important that we get clarity in that.
We'll do that, and we'll get information to the entire board just on Bowers-Witley, the program, and thank, for, if you talk about being physically responsible, I think part of that decision going to adult ed was, you know, operating a campus with whatever number that is, 50, 60 students, the transitioning to adult ed, just being more, more, more responsible with our dollars with, with Bowers-Witley. So we'll get all that information over to the board soon.
Okay, seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. And the motion passes unanimously. We now move on to 704 Agreement for the Use of School Facilities at Adam Middle School between the Tampa Bay United Soccer Club, Inc. and the School Board of Hillsborough County. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a use of facility agreement renewal for Tampa Bay United Soccer Club for the Monroe Athletic Fields. This five-year renewal period begins September 10th of this year and ends on September 1st, 2030. One five-year renewal option is included in this agreement. The rate is 10,000 per year for a total of 50,000 for the initial term. The Tampa Bay, it's important to note, the Tampa Bay United Soccer Club will maintain the soccer fields by mowing, seeding, fertilizing, fertilizing and watering the grass at Monroe. And that is 704, the agreement for the use, the use of facility agreement between Tampa Bay United and Adam Middle.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C 704. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Perez. Member Gray, you pulled this item. Do you have any questions or comments?
I had my questions answered. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear.
Where you going, Ms. Gray?
And the motion passes with Patty, uh, Member Rendon being away from the dais. 1001 Class Link Identify and Access Management. Superintendent Ayers will highlight this item.
Thank you. And our Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Geddes, is here as well to answer any questions. But Class Link's application launcher simplifies digital access by providing a secure single sign-on portal for all users, reducing login issues and maximizing instructional time. The roster service ensures accurate real-time data sharing between E S I S and third-party applications using one, one roster standard, streamlining account provisioning and class enrollment. Provides, this also provides for more seamless integration with educational technologies, reducing administrative overhead in support of long-term digital learning strategies. That is 1001. And our Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Geddes, is here if you have any questions for Class Link.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve C 1001. I have a motion by Member Combs, a second by Member Gray. Member Combs, you pulled this item. Do you have a question or comment?
Thank you, and thank you for being here so long. So just a couple of questions or comments. We spoke earlier today. You know, my, my biggest concern, if I look at four years ago, you know, this current contract's $587,000. Four years ago, the increase was 179,000, and the increase from last year is 97,000. So that's a substantial increase in the sal, in the cost. So one of the things I, I asked you, like, can Focus do this? Can another program do this? And we talked about that. If you could elaborate on your answer on that.
Yes, ma'am. So there are other services that can do what Class Link does for us. I know with the recommendation of interrupting school during the middle of the year, having to go back through and really build that out and integrate, it'd be pretty difficult and disruptive during the school year. So I would recommend that we continue with Class Link. As far as us building our own system, I know that you mentioned that previously. You look at the total cost of hiring programmers and you go through security and compliance and legal, things like that. It runs about, you know, roughly $4 million plus for the initial estimate to get there. And then, you know, an annual maintenance cost probably in the millions beyond that. So industry experts recommend using off-the-shelf item as opposed to building your own just due to the overall total cost of ownership.
Now, does Focus have any type of integration where we could utilize part of that? Is that, because I know they have a lot of different capabilities.
Focus actually uses Class Link to roster.
To rosters.
Canvas and other things like that. So it provides that link for them to roster and actually get on to there, so.
And then the other question we discussed is that some of this is part of the charter schools, and, and do we get refunded or do we get money back for that? And you said that you would look into that.
Yes, I, I talked to Jamie, I think that's something we need to look further into. That, the majority of this cost is 33,000 additional licenses for the charter school that wasn't captured last year. I think overall, with the negotiation of a discount that we got 5%, it's only a seven cent per license increase in cost, so it's not significant there. It's really capturing those additional licenses that we should have captured last year. But as far as the reimbursement, that's something that we're going to have to look into and get back to you, ma'am.
Yeah, and I, and I just want Class Link to know that, you know, maybe we will go out for an RFP, maybe we will go with someone. I'm just, you know, some of these contracts are just exponentially, people are increased 30, 40% because they think that we don't have the buying power. And being the seventh largest district in the country, you know, if we need to, we will find somebody else. Because that type of increase, when you look, almost every contract I'm looking at is exponentially. And what we're seeing is, you know, a 0.78 increase from the Department of Education. What we're not seeing is increased funding from, from the state. So I just counter it, making sure that we're getting the best deal.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's something that we worked with them, we got the initial bid and we did get that 5% discount from them recognizing the increase.
Okay. And then if you could follow up with the charter school cost and reimbursement on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Combs. Member Gray? Oh, no, no. Member Rendon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to thank your department for the, you know, the, the amount of attention that it has had on, on all of our IT as we move forward. I appreciate also that, like Member Combs had said, looking at everything collectively and the various different opportunities that we have to collect some of our IT, our contracts, all of the things that we're running in different areas, we're running Parallel Hill, you know, and doing different things. And so when we can get into a situation where we're working with, in one large system that we're all talking to each other, not having to, like, we want Canvas to work with we're all talking to each other, not having to, like, we want Canvas to work with Focus so that staff can be able to go in one, families can get into one unit. And so I do appreciate your looking at this. I understand right now, this is the option we have to have for the security and safety of our students. But I do appreciate the fact that you are looking beyond and being innovative of how we can scale back on all of what we're paying. So thank you so very much. And I again, thank you so much for the implementation of Focus. It was done very well. I recognize that we could have some training issues and that might be in the place, but overall, the in-depth that went into it, it was a very good rollout. So thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Seeing that there's no further questions or comments, please vote when your lights appear. Member Washington? All right, and that passes unanimously. From my understanding, that's the last agenda item, so we can move on to the superintendent's comments. Mr. Superintendent, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief with my updates tonight. Just some of the ones we already mentioned. We had a recognition around, was around national, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, and that celebrated from September 15th to October 15th, honoring the contributions and influence of Hispanic and Latino Americans in the United States. The celebration began as a week-long conservance in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson, was expanded to a month in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan. We look for many celebrations at our schools all month long. And as mentioned earlier, once again by Vice Chair Perez, every year on September 11th, the United States pauses to mark Patriot's Day, a national day of remembrance for the nearly 3,000 lives lost in the terrorist attacks of September 2001. At Freedom High School, where they will receive a 9/11 Freedom Flag from the Freedom Flag Foundation to be flown annually on Patriot Day below the U.S. flag through the month of September, along with a World Trade Center steel artifact recovered from Tower One at Ground Zero in New York City. I encourage, today that Freedom Flag is our nation's only codified 9/11 flag of remembrance and has been flown or displayed in nearly 2,000 schools, fire stations, and civic buildings in all 50 states, which now includes Freedom High School. I encourage everyone to check their child's school or check their school in their community for any events to commemorate the day this Thursday. Also had the opportunity at CEOs in Schools, Dr. Hahn, Ms. Rendon, Ms. Combs, you join me at the CEOs in Schools event, where I have the honor of joining those board members in Tampa Bay area CEOs and executives for the CEOs in Schools Executive Breakfast. And as you're all aware, this initiative, CEOs step into schools, shadow principals, and engage with teachers and students. It's more than just a one-day event. It sparks long-term relationships that bring mentorship, resources, and opportunities to our school. And just thanks to Anna Korman, our Hillsborough Education Founder, for their support of this program. This program, as you're all aware, has been almost part of the culture of Hillsborough County Public Schools and has made such a tremendous difference in our elementary schools. So those of you who were there, thank you for being there as we look off to the next CEOs in Schools, which is Friday, November 7th is the day, Friday, November 7th, at our CEOs in Schools event. And a couple others. It's no secret, Avid Day, September 12th. It's no secret, avid educators nationwide are renowned for their unparalleled dedication and profound impact on the students they serve. Avid Day honors the 45 years of impact of avid educators, students, schools, and districts across the nation. Just some of our avid at ACPS. We talk about all the results with Acceleration. We talk about it all the time. What we don't mention a lot of the time is our avid program and how that helps our students get prepared to take accelerated coursework. So I just wanted to make that note that, of course, Avid's at 86 of our sites. Avid programs are offered in 29 high schools, 38 middle schools, nine elementary schools, 10 K8s, and one career center. Avid impacts roughly 10,000 students at our avid secondary schools and select grade levels at avid elementary sites, not including the sixth-grade students who are exposed to Avid through sixth-grade elective wheel. So this week, our schools will be celebrating Avid and how it empowers our students to achieve their dreams through education. This year's celebration is extra special. Both cities of Tampa and Chicago have officially proclaimed September 12th as Avid Day. And I wanted to thank Mayor Castor for the city of Tampa's proclamation to honor Avid's 45 years of impact and the incredible educators who transport students' lives every day. And Madam Chair, those are my comments.
Thank you. We will now move on to board member comments. Board members, just a reminder, you'll have five minutes to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. And our first member is Member Gray.
Okay, congratulations again to our bargaining team. We have a tentative compensation agreement with the Hillsborough CTA, and I thank also Rob Crete for his leadership. I want to also focus on STEM at York. I'm looking at Pablo, if he has the slides that Ms. Laura Cross put together. But one of the neat things about York K-8 that our wonderful Principal Dustin Hoffman has shared is he wanted us to see what a STEM classroom looked like. And thankfully, we had, I mean, we are, not thankfully, but we have a wonderful STEM staff there between, I believe it was Jerry Turner, and we had also Ms. Crane. She's the STEM teacher. But what a staff they have. And also, we have Mr. Wright, that's on the far, I was gonna say the far right. Mr. Wright, very dynamic instructor. He has begun kindergarten through fifth grade elementary Spanish classes, and he spends his time during the day to get all the young students excited about Spanish and ready for the Hispanic Heritage Month, which by the way, also is coming up. So Superintendent Van Ayers, you have great leadership between and among Principal Dustin Hoffman, IB Coordinator Ms. Brooke Waley, and AP Samanthaia Long, and not to mention these great teachers of Mr. Wright and Ms. Crane and Jerry Turner. Next, speaking about Avid Day, no, not yet. Go back to the next one, Pablo. And maybe that is the next one. There it is. Yeah, I went over to Rogers, formerly Gray Vashem School, and met Principal Mary Durham, and she's really the buzz of the community. She's starting, joining with Owen Young, Parent University, soon wants to start the Student University. I don't know if I said Parent University or Anniversary, but should be University. And Student University. And she also was celebrating Avid Day, and in that spirit, wore, all the teachers and students wore the 1980s-type dress. And to celebrate the 1980, it began in the mid-1980s, the Avid program. So I thought that was pretty neat. A lot of transformative principles, Superintendent Van Ayers, and she's certainly one to keep an eye on. And last, Pablo, there we go. So we're looking forward to the Student Online Safety Human Trafficking at York Innovation Academy, September 25th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We have a full panel, FBI, Hillsborough County Sheriff Office, No More Foundation paving the way, and a lot of experts, including Gagel. So we're inviting all board members, of course, and the community. And I believe Dustin has guaranteed us over 100 participants and will provide pizza, et cetera. So we're very thankful for his engagement. And Missy Leonard, wherever you are, you must be very proud of this Principal Dustin. He has done one heck of a job for that, not only the school, but for that community, which is growing very rapidly. So that's all my comments. And Hispanic Heritage is coming, and I think we have board members that will also mention that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to say thank you to all of our staff. We've had a great beginning of a school year, and it's because of their due diligence and their work every single day with our students. And that does not go without notice to members of this board as well as the leadership of this district. So thank you very much. I have not been quiet about how I feel about making sure that we, as a board, are as educated and as informed as possible. And as a board, we have power under the statute of Section 1001.42 to hire an independent auditor. I've previously asked that this subject be brought to the board so that we can get a comprehensive view of the district's financial status that reports only to us. And that is allowed by statute so that we can actually know that we have other information and be educated, so we can ask proper questions. None of us are accountants, and I think it's very important to be able to have a different viewpoint so that we can properly make those decisions. I want to make a motion to direct the superintendent to bring an agenda item to the next board meeting to set up a process for the board to hire an auditor to perform a comprehensive audit of the district's financial status.
Okay, so Ms. Rendon is making a motion. You obviously cannot act on the substance of that tonight, but she's asking that a motion be passed that the superintendent would bring back an item allowing the board to hire an auditor. As she said, that's allowed specifically under Florida statutes. You have the power as a board to hire the superintendent, to have legal counsel, and to hire an independent auditor. So the motion requires a second if you want to discuss it further. And the motion will be to have an agenda item for the next meeting.
I want to discuss it.
So you need to second it.
I can.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I can start some questions.
Yeah.
How about it? I mean, doesn't mean I'm supporting it.
Your mic.
Doesn't mean I'm supporting it, but I do have some questions.
Yeah, so there's a motion on the floor. Madam Chair, there's a motion on the floor.
Dr. Hahn, right? I'm recognizing her to speak.
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. So close to get.
No, she said she's not seconding it, right?
I am, but it doesn't mean I'm supporting, like, in the end. It just, you know, means that I have some questions. So when I came onto the board, we had done a financial audit, Gibson Report, correct? So this is my concern, is we've done this before. It costs, I wasn't on the board. It was done, I think, the year before I became a board member, but it became like something we always referenced, but it was never, like, I want to say, like, the majority of what was recommended that came out of that report was never implemented. And looking back, I mean, we still will reference, well, what did the Gibson, and it just, we really didn't do much. And maybe because, you know, the following year and a half, you know, a year and a half later, we had a superintendent retire, and then we had a new superintendent, now we have a third superintendent. So, you know, that blueprint, though, that was hundreds of thousands of dollars, if I recall, and I can only imagine what it costs in this economy. You know, it's just my concern that, I just need to understand what you want to gain from it, other than a report this big that sits in everybody's drawer. Because what is the goal with that? What is the problem you want to solve with that? Because when we look at our finances, what those reports typically say is, this is where you are financially, which I honestly think our CFO has given us a very good financial picture. And this is what you need, these are the cuts you need to make and the changes you need to make to be more efficient or save money or, and I think we're doing that. We need to give our CFO a chance to do that. He's starting to be very strategic in some of the groups that he's put together and people he's put together to solve problems. And I just, I don't have a lot of confidence that spending that kind of money is really going to reap the benefit that you think it is. I just, going through it once, I don't know. I mean, I'd love to hear other board members', you know, perspectives, and that's why I seconded this, because I understand why you want it, because you want to see, do we have duplication of effort with contracts and programs? But I don't think a financial audit, thank you, is necessarily going to get at that as much as where, and maybe they'll look at every single contract and every single program, but I kind of think they look at the books. But, you know, and the Gibson Report had a lot of information in there, and it just, you know, it just was not utilized. I don't think the, we never got the benefit of what it actually, the investment was. There was no ROI. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Member Gray?
Yes, I remember the Gibson Report, and it was two thick volumes I had, and still have. It wasn't really an audit as much as what we should do, the better way of work. We wanted to centralize many of our way of work, many of our divisions, et cetera. Our audits, and just for your satisfaction, Member Rendon, from the Council of Great City Schools, we've had internal audits, we've had that one, and there's a, and Dr. Waylon, what was the name of that alphabet audit we had? It was all perfect audits. And I can't remember, not the Gibson, it was, yeah, that's it, yeah. Say that, say it.
Opaga.
Yeah.
It was when we were going out, the opaga.
The opaga. And we, you know, all those audits were so sophisticated, but they were very, very lending to us being, there was halting any errors. It was one of the above-average audits. Back to the expense, we spent over 15,000, maybe 20,000 for that Gibson Report.
It was close to a million dollars. It was about 2017, 2018, close to a million.
Nine hundred thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
A million dollars, okay. Let's round it up. And how much was it used? Very, very little. Very little. And the only person, the only school board member that really used it and referenced, and Superintendent Van Ayers, you are very keenly reminded, it was Member Snively would refer to that Gibson Report. But when you start spending money on a report that we have already had positive reviews from, and there's another financial report we had, and then you have a CFO who's doing a stellar job with his team. I would rather go ahead, and there is classes too, Member Rendon, that you can take on financial, the way of work for school districts. The Florida School Board Association does offer that. So, you know, that would also help, the financial literacy if needed. But I'm satisfied with the current reports, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Combs?
Thank you, Chair Vaughn. I agree with Member Hahn and Member Gray. I remember several years ago when I was Chair of the School Board, and we found a new auditor. I was so surprised at the process that I went through and how, when they selected different committee members when I was Chair, it was amazing what they went through to have an internal audit to make sure that it was really, you know, anonymous and having different committee members and different people, and the way the selection process was. I was very, it made me feel very confident with the district when I saw the type of process that they went through. When we chose a new auditor, it was very challenging, and the way we interviewed every different group, the way we did the selection process, I was very, very impressed. And I agree, I mean, Mr. Lewis just came. You know, when you're being funded 50th in the nation, and there's not a lot of money, we have to watch every single penny. So we have to give time to Mr. Lewis. We have Dr. Patton working closely together to really look at that. I think we have a lot of talent here that we can take care of that internally and work on that, and make sure that your needs are being met and your questions are being asked. We don't go from a bond rate, we don't increase bond rating if we're not on the right direction. And that's for sure. Our bond rating would not be increasing if we were not doing the best that we can. So I think we need to continue looking internally, keep looking at the way we can, you know, really look at different schools, look at repurposing, keep looking at every single contract and all of that. And I believe in the talent and the money that we spend on our cabinet and different individuals to work on that. And I believe, Mr. Lewis, you can work on that. And in a few months, you know, maybe we can create a workshop and look at it closer. But I do not think this is the time right now to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. I'm open to an idea of a forensic audit, but for me, I'm just not ready to support making a motion from the dais. I would have to have more of an understanding before I even wanted an agenda brought forward of the cost, the time, the return on investment. So for me, it's not a no on just the idea, it's the way that, you know, it's coming from last minutes of comments at the end of a meeting where I can barely speak anymore because I'm so tired. And, you know, if it's something that we're interested in exploring and the superintendent's interested in it, I'm certainly open to hearing more about it. But to me, I'd have so many more questions than just an item coming forward on the agenda. And I would like more opportunity for us to discuss it as the board in the sunshine than just an agenda review, so, I mean, agenda review, an agenda item. So for me, I'm open to the idea, but this is just not the place where I'm going to support it. Thank you. I recognize you, Member Rendon. We'll get there, guys.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I only want to address one issue. The only reason it's been brought here at the end of the evening tonight is because it's the only time I'm allowed to bring it in on the sunshine. It is not to surprise anyone. It is different than anything we've ever done before. Every audit that's ever been done before has been done and directed by the district. So the district controls how the audits are done. You guys have the right to vote. Let me make it very clear to Member Gray, I am not just gone to classes about budget, but I'm the only certified board member from Florida School Board Association that has taken the classes, Member Gray. So please do not be condescending to me anymore. Thank you. Good night.
Okay. Did you have any other closing comments, Member Rendon? I'm gonna assume not. Were there other members in the queue for closing comments? Did you speak, Member? Oh, we do have to vote. I can't do this anymore. Should I hand the gavel over to Member Perez?
Okay. The motion on the floor is to direct the superintendent to bring an agenda item with information about hiring an auditor for the board.
No comments, Member Combs? About this specific motion by Member Rendon?
Board is cleared, you can vote on the motion.
Okay, so please vote when your lights appear on Member Rendon's motion. And the member fails with Member Perez and Member Rendon voting in favor. Okay, now we're done with that motion. We're going back to board member comments, right? Who else was still in the queue? That was Member Rendon. Who was after Member Rendon? It was just me? There's no one else? Member Combs?
No. We know that.
Nope, Member Combs has not gone. Member Combs, for your closing comments, you are recognized.
Okay, since it is the 50th year of the Bucks, I can say, "Go Bucks." But at the same time, since we do live in Hillsborough County, I can also say, "Woo, Bulls." No, I'm sorry, you know, I can say, we do live in Hillsborough County, so I have to say, I have to say that, you know, okay? That was, so I had, you know, I had to wear my lapel today. So I just want to say just a couple things. You know, National Hispanic Heritage Month is very exciting. We're celebrating that. And the next meeting, I'll be sharing the event in Town and Country on October 9th at Lado High School. We're going to have the Hispanic Heritage Celebration, so we're very excited. And then I'm very excited because I've been very, working very closely for many years with the Asian community, and so we're very excited. If you can, Pablo, we have our first ever, our Harvest Moon Festival. It's going to be, we are really here to celebrate our Asian community, so excited. It's going to be held at Alonzo High School, and the woman in charge, Ms. Huen, she has done so many things for our Asian community, so we hope that So we hope that many people will come out. There's going to be the Vietnamese, American History Essay Contest. It's really about celebrating our Asian community here in Hillsborough County. There's going to be face painting. We're going to have the Filipino, Bangladesh, Taiwanese, Korean. And we are really going to, we're very excited. This is the fourth year this has been happening, and I've been working directly. And thank you, Superintendent, and thank you especially, Dr. Whalen, for working with us and meeting. And we had a meeting the other day and making a planning and bringing this for the first time. We're really excited to celebrate our Asian community and celebrating the Children's Festival. So thank you so much. Then I also want to share this very exciting news. About four or five months ago, the Young Girl Scout Troop from Mary Bryant, they contacted me in May, Troop 1846, and they were working on their bronze project. And so their goal was, they started, they were really concerned about the traffic in West Chase community. They were so concerned about the cars and the safety, so they started a lemonade stand. And then they started a traffic study and learned all about that. And then they met with me in May. They had a PowerPoint. They talked about the danger of that area and how they wanted to create a sidewalk. So we met, we talked, we started by writing letters, and then eventually we went to the county commission. I contacted in the heart of West Chase, Commissioner Hagan, and he was definitely the right commissioner in West Chase. So, he was so wonderful, and all the young girls presented at the county commission, they had such great speeches and all spoke, you know, from the heart and gave real factual information. So, yesterday, we surprised them at Farnell. They had no idea. They came in, and Commissioner Hagan has approved their sidewalk. And he also gave them a commendation. You can see these beautiful commendations. And it's really amazing to see civics in action and seeing these young leaders, these future leaders that are now at Farnell. And it was so exciting when they came in and he spoke, and they just started screaming. And they're just a small but mighty group. I also wanted to thank their troop leader, Ms. Davis. And just so you know, on the very far right in the middle there, that's Addison Davis. Her name is Addison Davis, you know? And I had met her five years ago, and there she is now as a future leader. So that troop and their mother is Carrie Davis. So it was really exciting. And we're so excited. Once that sidewalk is implemented, I think they're going to put a plaque there. And I told them, "It's just for generations and generations of safety." And I just learned today that the Filipino Center is going to allow extra hours, and there's going to be a ton of traffic there. So could not have come at a better time for the safety of that community. And I want to thank Commissioner Hagan and Glory, who helped, his aide, who's just amazing, who did so much hard work. And I just want to say, you know, really working together on a project is what it's really all about. And so I'm very excited about that. And it really, it was really the highlight of my week. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs. And thank you for that tip. Now I know which commissioner gives some sidewalks away, right? Because we need those. Quickly, I just want to say that I hope we're doing focused training. And it really bothers me to hear that there are employees that are coming that are asking for training because every single thing that we approve, I specifically ask over and over again, what is employee training going to look like? So, I'm hoping that I don't hear any other employees ask about focused training. That's all I'm going to say about that. Secondly, I have been alerted that there is a teacher at Lanier Elementary who has been live streaming very, very weird political, extreme live streams and publishing them on TikTok on their, from their social media, from their classroom. And I'm very concerned about that. And I would like to figure out what our stance is as a district. I know that, you know, we've heard the messaging over and over again, we want to create a district where all parents feel comfortable sending their kids to schools, that there's no indoctrination. And when you have a teacher who's from their classroom, especially if they teach ESOL, talking about how we don't want immigrants in our country, I think it's an extreme problem and something that I'd like some feedback on, what we're doing as far as that. Other than those things and the night that we've had, I do want to say that, you know, even though tonight has been extremely hard and, you know, we've had to talk about some issues that we all feel strongly about. Like, I am still super proud to work in Hillsborough County. When I look at other districts, whether they're not able to negotiate with their teachers, whether they have less enrollment than we do, you know, whatever it is. I know that Hillsborough County is big and hard and it has its problems. But I'm so proud of the work that we do, and it starts from, you know, the people that I talked about really are our janitors, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers. It goes all the way through our teachers, our district staff, and to this board, and to you, Superintendent Ayers. You know, and even though we're often on opposite sides of things, I think that, you know, again, I want to reiterate that I think that we all have a heart for kids, and we're trying to do the right things in the very challenging times when it comes to education. And I'm just very proud to be a part of this board and a part of Hillsborough County. And I think that our district is the best place for a majority of our kids. So, I just want to end with that. Thanks to everybody. Have a great night, and this meeting's adjourned.